So just the revenue that's not on yet.
No, you're good. Oh, I think I bet it's muted. There we go. Good catch. Would have been bad if we. Yep, we're ready to go.
All right.
You're good?
Yep, we're good.
Okay. Thanks, everybody for being here. This is our budget wrap chart that we're going to start and we're going to answer all our questions and learn about all the money we have. So, turn this over to Sarah.
Thank you. We'll start with section one. It's the fund balance and some of the programs. If you guys have any questions, just stop me. I'll try to answer them if I don't know them. We'll take notes and get your answers.
Is that what you started out with or ended up with?
Ended up with. Well, or and then started out with, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. But this is the fund balance for the the general fund, and this is the un- like, none of this is restricted in any ways. So the fund balance and for FY25, when we just, the year that we just closed was 2,309,652. And then, just to give you a reference, the prior five years are down below, just so you can see kind of where and the COVID funding that we received helped us kind of cushion that fairly significantly in the last few years. And we've been able to keep it fairly steady, staying in the two, the two millions. The next page over is just the balance sheet from the financial statement. So that just shows you, if you look at column one under Fund 11, General Current Expenses, you can get all the way down to the bottom to fund balance, you'll see that 2,309,652 in the bottom line as unassigned. So above that is assigned. That's small grants that have come in through the general funds that aren't required to be in Fund 61 or that have been, like Medicaid, some of those things that we kind of, we don't, aren't necessarily restricted. Bus allowance, stuff like that to assign. It doesn't have to be restricted to those, but we assign it to those places or those categories. Above that, non-spendable would have been the pre-pay that we made for the insurance.
Are pre-existing families currently under watch for their financials?
There are several. I think there are up to 12 or 15.
Taken over, you mean, right?
Take, that's been taken over. I don't know if there's some that are just under.
County, but one that really got into the
Yes.
total of the superintendent and chief days.
There's a whole bunch of stuff going on in Uptown, yeah.
Are they still?
They're still.
Yeah, and there was a couple that couldn't balance. They're actually negative. So they didn't have any fund balance. It was actually negative. They couldn't. There was a couple of those. I think the state is the finance department is kind of stretched right now, trying to keep up with all of those and go out and make the meetings and check. And I think it's a significant amount more than what they typically have, unfortunately.
Like Dogrich's opening had the fracking. Are they still making enough to?
Dogrich doesn't receive any state funding.
Marshall, Marshall neither. I think they have 122 million unrestricted in there. I think there's three. I think there's three that's.
I think
Don Marshall.
I think Tyler County this year received state aid for the first time, and I don't know how many years. And I don't know how much. It probably wasn't much state aid, but they finally went back to receiving it. But I think there was like four or five counties in total, and I think now it's down to three, maybe.
I could say along those seven, they didn't have levies.
I want to probably ask you a lot of stupid questions.
Well, there's no stupid questions.
So first page is 2.3, and that's what we're starting the year with, correct?
That isn't assigned.
Right, that's just the, the extra that we have there that we carried forward to the next year.
So when does that start? When's the fiscal year?
The fiscal year ends June 30 and starts July 1.
Okay.
And that's what I was going to say. When you say Fund 61 or Fund 11, you probably need to explain what that means, because I'm not sure everybody.
It's just our general fund. So like the county, like the taxes that come in, you have that fund.
When does that come in?
Any donation. They come in monthly.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, yeah. So all that. Yeah, we don't have to make it any certain amount, certain amount of time on that 2.3 million. It's just the extra that we carry forward, and then our state aid funding, all of that stuff starts coming in monthly.
Throughout the year?
Yeah, throughout the year.
And the taxes.
Yeah, so it's not like we have to. It's not like we only have that 2.3
For the rest of the year.
until we get to a certain point, and then funds start coming in. Our, everything starts rolling in monthly. And then, as we get federal grants and state grants, they're in Fund 61, which is like the third, is that the third, second column there? It's a different fund where we keep all of those, but those are restricted. So like our special education federal funding that comes in, our title programs.
Well, that's a wash.
Right, because I mean, it's restricted to
Right.
Just have to be spent on certain things, and we just, like you said, wash it out. Those expenses go in there, they come out. So at the end, there's going to be a little bit there, but it's only because we received grants that hadn't been fully spent yet. But they're they're earmarked for those specific things. So we usually don't focus, we usually don't focus there on what's remaining.
I guess, you know, the concern was, obviously, we committed ourselves for half a million, 15 years, whatever. And I guess, you know, there's like 200 for the lighting, or two more years or something like that.
One more year. Well, we paid this year, so one more year.
Okay, so this 2.3 already shows the 200 out for the light.
No, no, no. No. Because that's as of June 30, and I think we made the payment for the light in July, in July.
So that's.
So it's not out of there now.
Okay. So what would that balance be?
If I can give it to you as of the end, but I mean, it's not really going to be. But is the end of, because this is, isn't really a clear picture, but when we run this expenditure report each month, have Octobers in here to go over. So the money's remaining now is 5.7 million. But that's also because we've up, we've been up fronted some of, like the real estate taxes and stuff. Some of the larger amounts come in July and August.
Got you.
Meaning before it's due.
So your monthly payments, basically, from the taxes are equal. Some months are different.
It's all dependent. Yeah, some months might be 2 million, not many, or 2 million, and then one month might be 55,000.
Okay, that makes sense.
So if, if, if we were to have, yeah, if we had shut doors on October 31 and stopped the year at that point, we would have been 5,702,000.
But that's really not.
But some of that is, needs to hold us over for some of those months when we do get a 55,000 dollar check instead of a million dollar one. So it's hard to look at it right now, Melvin, with predict, you know, like looking at all that. But that's, if you want to look at it in that manner, that's what's there. But it's, it's up fronted some mainly because August and September are usually big ones for the property tax.
I guess, I mean, I appreciate you showing the last five years because that gives at least me an idea of where we probably will be in another year minus the new 500 that we've committed. You know what I mean?
Right.
Unless, I mean, I know there's a lot of variables.
Right. And half of that, hopefully, will be savings.
Right.
So hopefully, we're only looking at
Right.
The actual expense for us.
Right.
Above and beyond what we normally have to do. And like I said, if you go back and look at like 17, 18, 19, those years, it was a lot less. I'm not even sure we had a million in the fund reserve those years. So when you heard that, yeah, we were able to kind of we were able to kind of swap out some expenses and try to cushion our fund balance because we knew some of this stuff would be coming up. You know, like the repairs and maintenance and HVAC systems and the light, the lights, we kind of swapped some salaries over to be paid out of those funds to cushion so we could replace the lights that desperately needed replaced.
I don't expect us to go on a huge spending spree, but anyways, but I just know that it's better to be conservative, and the figures you're showing, at least I don't feel as bad as I did about 20, 15 years.
You should also see a savings in the HVAC costs because if you look at the parts and the pieces and the stuff we've had to replace, like at Morefield Middle and Morefield Elementary School, with those projects being updated in the roofs, you'll see, you should really see that drastically drop off too on the savings end. So while we're, right, like all of those parts that we order, and we, I mean, we'd have to look, I don't know if you have that number, we'd have to pull to see just what we've spent on parts for our units over the years, but that's been thousands and thousands of dollars, which now with brand-new units, at least under warranty for another ye- you should see a good, significant decrease in having to replace those pieces since they're all new.
All right, thank you, Lori.
No, no, you're welcome.
You said that 84, 764 was insurance. What was it, PIA?
No, it would have been GRAM.
GRAM, okay.
There's a prepayment on that.
Okay.
Moving on to the next page is federal programs. Taking a look at Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, State DL, and Title 4. Kind of did a five-year comparison there so you can see where we were and where we are now. Since 2023, things each year, they've slowly kind of decreased, and this year was more of a significant decrease. If you, and if you add up all five of those programs, I made a note there at the bottom that the decrease between FY25 and FY26 was $82,000. And as of now, I don't think they have any idea for, do you know anything for next year?
No, there's been nothing said in a definite way.
So it's federal money?
That's all federal money. That was the one that was on hold. These were the programs that were on hold, that they weren't sure we were going to get them, and we were, and we weren't, and we weren't going to get as much, then they decreased it again after they sent out the original.
Just recently decreased again.
The original grant awards, we budgeted, submitted, and then before it was approved, they resented them out with a little bit less than what they had on before.
Do these go towards salary rec now?
They, they, Title 1, the Title 1 funds pay for a couple of the teachers, the Title 1 teachers. Title 2 and Title 4 pay for some professional development that we do, some that's required to be done. Title 3 is DL, so like DL interventionists.
We're taking the DL interventions from the state DL money.
From the state DL money. It's federal, we can't pay.
Because we can't use any of the Title 3 federal to pay for as a teacher.
Yeah.
Pay for this after school, we can pay for supplies, we can pay for supports, we can pay for behavior, we can't pay for teachers for bodies, work for kids.
Was it the coaches that paid out of there?
We're taking the coach from.
The coaches from Title 3, right?
Well, well, the coaches in the buildings are coming from that.
Title 3, okay.
The teachers getting the extra money to help facilitate is coming from that. But the DL interventionist we're paying for is, they're coming from Title 4 funds and from the state DL funds.
So to keep the same programs, that comes out of the ground, but it's a difference.
It would, yes. But we is there as many Title 1 teachers as we have?
Uh, no, we're one, we're one less.
Okay, there you go.
And we didn't do the interventionists either, right?
And we don't have the intervention positions anymore that are coming from.
And Jennifer's salary is one of these.
Now, that piece I don't know. To the, for you to know that, are, are they federally, federally required to have a Title 1 teacher?
No, no, we don't have to have a Title 1 teacher, but we we do that in schools to fill gaps in instruction and do intervention, yeah.
He's asking if we don't get, he's asking if we don't get enough money to pay for a teacher, do we have to pay for it out of general fund?
Oh, well, you want to keep it, yeah.
Well, it just seems like there's a lot of federal in-state requirements that have come down through the years with no dollars attached.
You are 100% correct.
And so that's why I'm asking, you know.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
When does the third grade age go in effect?
They're there now.
This year.
It's coming here?
Currently, right now.
So all our third grade classes have to.
Yes. And those are funded pretty, pretty much completely.
Sixth grade?
Third is the last.
Third is the last? I'm talking one on one.
Students all reading.
Third grade, do we have six in Cali County?
We were funded for six, but we have seven.
Four, five, six, seven.
So there's five at Morefield.
Is it six and a half? I think it's six and a half. I think we have, we have a classroom at Morefield Intermediate School that's a third, fourth split. But because the third grades require age, you have to put an eight in that room, and then we have two at East Tardy.
We're funded for six, but we have six and a half.
We have seven. We have to have seven. But there's only a half a third grade there, but just still had to put a eighth.
Once again, she helps the fourth graders or absolutely not.
Yeah, she helps the fourth graders. Yeah, she did. The alternative to not doing that would have been hiring a teacher, so
Right.
To the age cheaper than, yeah.
So assume that we do that like we always do, the third grades are the top students that are in that class.
They, they.
And, yeah, and then the fourth or maybe some of the.
Yeah, I think they work with the parents and the teachers to figure out kids that would be able to work well in a split class.
Yeah, if, if these funds decrease, continue to decrease or continue to go away, we would either have to make the decision to cover those expenses out of the general fund or not provide those for them. Unfortunately. The next page behind that is just the allocations that come over the state's GPS system. So that was just to show you where I pulled those numbers from for this year. If you look at the the first column's going to be Title 1. We don't receive the next column, then it's Title 2, Title 3, State DL, and Title 4. And we also don't receive Title 5, but that shows you the amounts that we we did receive and that I used on that recap page in front of it.
So that all adds up to 564.
No, I didn't add them, did I? It should be 721,994,37.
Oh, I worked toward the end.
Works there. I didn't have them up here, Charlie.
That's okay. I just so that's what all those figures should add up to.
They should add up to that, yes.
But it's still 82,352 less.
From the prior year, from '25 to '26.
Okay, so and, and the red flag on that is that you said that we don't have as many aides, so we should be.
We have one less Title 1 teacher this year.
And we didn't hire, replace the interventionists. That was the other piece.
So that, that sort of makes.
That'll take up that.
Yeah, for this year.
For this year.
Pretty close to it, okay.
Yep. Everyone's good with that one? The next section, the next page is Special Education. So here, I just did the same sort of format, showed you the last five years. And it's the IDEA, Special Education, then the preschool, we get a small Special Education preschool grant from the federal government, and then what we received from the state for Special Education. So it did not change. I, it, well, I put the number down there, it actually decreased $46. I don't know why they, I don't know the rhyme or reason as to why they left alone. And that their focus was on the title programs, but our Special Education remains fairly close to what it has been.
So can you tell me again what the mnemonic of that DEA is?
Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
Thank you. It's not going to happen. The next page is the same, it's just out of the GPS system from the states, just to show you where I pulled those numbers from. Just the backup to that. The page after that, I just recapped the student count. So this is the number of special qualifying students. Would be the students that have IEPs.
Mm-hmm, students with IEPs.
Students with IEPs. And I just had the numbers from 2018, so I just, I started with there. It went up through 2026. And these numbers are based on the October count and does not include gifted. So the number of gifted students for this current year, when they did the certified list with the enrollment count, was 20. And I made that note down there so you could just see, if anyone was curious about that. Now, Beth did tell me, I also have another note down there, that there are currently 48 students to test to determine eligibility.
Probably none of the gifted either. I can't believe how large a gift number is compared to what it was.
And she felt confident that a large majority of those would qualify. So that will be something to keep in mind.
Change from year to year, what constitutes gifted?
For gifted, they have changed in the past, not year to year for sure. I mean, probably early 2000s, they were changed a little bit, but recently, no. Kids just don't, they're not taught to think critically like they had to in the past because all the information's in their hand, so they just, kids can't, can't think.
So say if, I'm just gonna say we get 45 of those down here. So that'd make us at about 525 of students with an IEP.
That's essentially 5% of enrollment.
That's kind of scary. And it would, I know that the IEPs are on all sorts of things. It would be interesting to see the percentage breakdowns of those IEPs.
Yeah.
So we make sure.
You can have Beth do that the next meeting.
Be able to do that.
Yeah, Beth can get you that at the next report she goes.
Oh, okay.
I can have her do that.
So we can make sure we're focusing where we need to focus, where the largest percent. Do we have certified special teachers in all the special positions?
No. Our substitutes are at Morefield Elementary School in that self-contained room. We have two substitutes there. I think other than that, we may have a long-term sub at East Tardy Elementary in there, self-contained. I can't remember if she's certified or not, but it was getting certified, I believe. But I think everybody else is certified.
Question, more questions about that? The next page is the state grant that we get. You'll notice that it was supposed to be 76,000 from that first page, but we have two students out of state placement. So those two students equal about 43, almost $44,000. So they'll take what you're supposed to get, the 76, deduct the 44,000, and then we get the 32,000.
I don't know. I don't know where those kids are. It could be, it could be. Yes. It could be.
For their hard account.
Yeah, I think they're from Morefield. It could be Oklahoma, or New Jersey, or Texas. We've had them everywhere. It could be Virginia too, but typically, they're decent pieces of way. Oh, I'm sure, no, we have it. I just don't know off the top of my head. Those are just the places we typically see. But I, I mean, I, we have it back at the office. I just don't know it off the top of my head. For these two. I'm glad we only have two.
Yeah, I'm sure.
At this point, we had nine.
Well, if you flip the next page, I have the list there that you can see. You want to look at that? Sometimes it's nice or interesting just to see.
Yeah, there it is.
Harrison's the one that kind of surprised me.
Yeah.
But I think I always think they're smaller than they are.
No, Harrison's a pretty good size, yeah.
Yeah, I think in my mind, I, I think of South Harrison.
Yeah.
And then think the whole county's small.
Well, and I can see Harrison. Well, and I can see Harrison sitting here, I can't, well, I mean, not tolerating any. Yep, none of the virtual academies have any.
You wonder those that have.
Actually, the prep academy does.
I, I think a lot of it is the.
Old kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I had a really great conversation, now that you say that, with Orin about that, um, just a couple of weeks ago, because he didn't realize. And he said, I guarantee you the judges don't know, and I said, I've talked to the judges and tried to explain to them, and he said he was gonna schedule something and sit down. Um, and just, just so that they understand, but I've, I've, I've talked, well, Lucas, at one point in time, I spoke to directly about it, and then I talked to Judge Carl about it, and just said, these kids, you, if you could just find other ways to solve the problems, but parents have issues with them, they end up in the court system, and then they, they violate, they, they offend and do something against probation, and then they.
What did they send, some place they sent kids and most people?
It's always full. Well, and these are, these are, um, these are a lot of times treatment centers too, so Chick Buckby is a holding cell until they find them a treatment, a bed, they call it, but they're going to places that are usually hospitals.
Yes, are, are, are they supposed to age or is it something called?
Well, a lot.
Some sense of use is it?
Some of it is both, but I know, like, one of our kids is a sexual offender. So he's in a special, sis, a special school, basically, it's a hospital-based, getting specific treatment for that.
But that just seems a shame to send the money out to state.
Yeah.
And you could probably find a better place.
Absolutely. I even talked to, um, now, I think they're doing something at the Navy Base, I got a phone number for whatever they're putting in up there, so I need to call that guy. Uh, but I talked to the president at Grant Memorial and told him the same thing, like, if you could just open up a section, build a facility here, we'd fill it, like, you would get it, West Virginia kids for sure. He said they can't find providers, he said you can't find the, he said you can't find, um, the therapists and the folks to work in the hospital setting to treat them. I got a name. It is Ladale Jackson, does anybody know Ladale Jackson? That's who's operating that? And getting ready to open up a, a facility-type setting up there, they were saying? That's what they told me at the hospital, so I've.
You talking about the sugar road in the middle of the place?
Yeah, I got a phone number for them, they wrote them for me, I, said I.
They tried many things to get in there.
Yeah, I didn't realize it had a track, and a, it's apparently a nice facility.
It's an isolator, it's a trial.
It's really, really a nice facility. It's unbelievable.
Has everything.
Has a full track, they said, I didn't realize it had a track and a basket, I don't know. Yeah, we need to probably figure that out. Yeah.
So once one of our students gets placed out of state, is that, is there a set time limit for that placement?
It's whenever they, whenever they feel the students made progress to release them, they have certain benchmarks they have to, to meet, they are at that location.
Okay, so do we know how they may be sent there for a year if they feel that they can come back?
Yeah.
And then come out to our school system?
Yep, typically, yes, typically. They typically come back, yeah.
That's what happens a lot, that you say jail.
The next page was just more of the, um, special education state allocation. And it actually has the total number of school age students and pre-K age students. If you wanted to look at that. Put that in there for you. The page after that is special education MOE, maintenance of effort, each year we have to, out of the general fund, look at our expenditures that we pay with general funds for special education, we have to maintain a certain amount of those funds. And I just wanted to bring this to your all's attention, just, Mr. Harper just talked about the rules and regulations and all the stuff that they keep imposing. From FY eighteen up until twenty-five this year, you can see how much the general fund expenditures for special education have increased. With the significant increase being from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-five, it's increased, I think it was seven hundred, when I did the math, seven hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars in just a three-year period. Out of the general fund. So those, that bond balance that we have, has been helping to cushion that increase. And a lot of that is, a lot of those are regulations that have been, two years ago, we had to have to do the audio, we just did the audio and cameras. Not too long ago, that had to be implemented in all the, the audio in the bathrooms.
We got a little bit of funding to help initially put those in, but now, anything we add, we have to pay out of pocket for.
And again, I think Joe probably doesn't understand that, because I didn't understand that. And so it's, you know, when you say that we've got two-point-three carryover or whatever, that's so misleading.
Yeah, yeah.
That goes right here, it's a million-dollar of it.
Right.
Yeah, it would.
Um, we, so this Friday, tomorrow, I have to be at Charleston at one o'clock, and a group of superintendents are speaking to the House Senate Ed Committee, Committee. And, um, I guess they're caucusing now, and then everything will be rolling out here soon, but specifically on the, I'm speaking specifically on the school aid formula. And they asked for a request, just like written out, um, essentially write up what you want the bill to be, and they'll sponsor it. And one of the things we're sponsoring is the, um, or putting, giving them to sponsor is the, uh, change in the school aid formula that would allow special ed students to be worth more of the student aid than what non-special ed student waited like they used to be. Used to be worth three, but even now, if it was, if it was two, would be significantly. Yes, and I think now everybody's in such bad shape that, I don't, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna cheat the system, we, if we could just get what it would actually be. Yeah. Yeah. So those kids that are in self-contained rooms maybe could be worth three, kids that require half of their day with special ed services could be two, and then you could, you could scale it where, depending on what the eligibility is, how much.
How much more does it cost to educate special ed students compared to a regular?
There are statistics, but I don't have them in front of me, they talked about that, I mean, it's probably three pounds as much.
And you feel sorry for them, don't get me wrong, I feel sorry for them still.
Yeah, they deserve the services, I mean, it's not, they need the services, but we have to have the funding to pay for it. Yeah, right now, we're taking away English teachers, math teachers out of high school classrooms, because we have to hire additional special ed teachers to be, you know, four-to-one. So you're getting four kids that are getting their own teacher, and we're having to put thirty, thirty-five kids in high school classes, because the people have to come from somewhere else in the formula, and that's not right.
No, it's not.
I have spoken to a few other people from other counties that know, like you all know, our shelter workshops that we use. And how beneficial that was. And because of government made us go away from that. Or inclusion, or whatever it would be. I, I just think hopefully, and you're swinging back to.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're seeing.
Let them learn skills and.
Couple of year people or not.
Haven't, I haven't seen, it's something I would like to do, I mean, I've talked to you guys about how I'd love for, like, a middle school CTE program, kids can kind of decide they wanna go into that and change. What they're doing now is those are charter schools, so the avenue to do those things currently would be that you allow one of your schools in the county to become a charter school, and once that happens, it releases you from all of the restrictions that the state requires you to follow. You still get money, because you're still a public school, but it takes away the specifically required credits for certain things, and that's where you get your flexibility. That's what I'm hearing that people are going to be doing.
That's for special ed too?
For, for anything you wanna do that's not currently allowed, basically, like, if it's not permitted under the current regulations that the state has in place, if you wanna do something different, then you need to, you can, you can do that with the charter school.
How many of those students, you all probably know more than I, that Mr. Phillips and others made employment ready?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The ones we're putting out now.
Have to have specific requirements, that, yeah, to have to take math classes and, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, I know of a handful, it's the same thing, but I just know, they've done very well in the first one.
Mm-hmm.
Because they've, they've been, they've been employed.
Yeah.
Or that over the last thirty years.
Yeah, it's a huge piece that's missing.
Where I just, I think we're missing, but it's all because of.
Makes too much sense.
They gotta be in regular classrooms.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta, I'm trying to change your education and fit the need of the student.
Of the kids.
Some state person who's never been in a classroom, PhD person that's writing these rules.
Well, and what changed it all was you had parents who wanted their kids out with typical developing kids, and then when that happened, when their kids weren't out there with everybody else, they felt like their kids were being treated differently, and there were lawsuits, and so you had the big boom of legal action taken against school systems for segregating the special ed kids and not giving them access to everything like everybody else, and then it was just push them all out. It's not always what's best, and I would tell you, it's probably not what all parents want either. There are probably parents who would love to have their kids be part of a program like that, that was, especially if it's run well, you know?
That's the problem. Of a hundred programs, if one program is not run well, gets.
Everybody.
Where the other ninety-nine are doing a great job.
You got it, yeah, you got it.
Shut them everything, you know, with that one program.
Got it.
The next seven pages were just the backup, probably, but anyway, that's where those numbers came from. Um, and then the last page in this section, I just, uh, Jennifer got me numbers for student counts for EL students. We have the last three years.
That number, number changes, I mean, it can be just one day, and it can change in a month, be different.
For a range in order?
Yes.
You go by pennies for some.
Yeah, they'll show up, they have three new EL students the next day.
So how many countries now do we have?
Countries, oh gosh.
Languages.
Languages, we have, I wanna say twenty still, but countries.
Where, where's the law, where's the law, are you sure from Mexico?
There are so many, I mean, we have many, a lot from Mexico, we have a lot still from here, Trillo, we have many from, um.
Haiti.
From, yeah, Haiti, yes, we have many from, um, El Salvador, Honduras, Guatemala, yeah, yes.
Do you have any, any statistics on academically how these students compare?
No.
To our native daily student?
No, and that would totally depend on the level that the students are as an EL student, if they're level one, which means they really don't understand much, and they smile and nod and say yes, because they don't know what else to say. Cause they don't understand, but don't want to let you know they don't understand. Or if they're a level four, where they can, you know, have a conversation and understand and do some academic language, that would.
We would have that in the scorecard too, right?
Question.
The scorecard gives them a rank.
Scorecard shows us how, the stick report card and the scorecard shows how our ELs are doing academically. Goal is to help them pass and make accommodations as they learn English and that from eighteen-year. And you have three really good EL teachers who work their best off to do that, okay, I'm gonna plug, they do, they, they look hard.
I, I have the general impression, and it's based on nothing but that feeling, that these, um, EL students seem to be really giving it the best they can.
There, they do.
I mean, I, I.
They have a few exceptions, like always, kids who just don't wanna do the work, no matter the culture, you have that.
I talked with a, with a ninth grade, with a freshman yesterday morning in Mrs. Slack's hospitality class. And he showed me the project that he did for a class assignment. I don't know that I could have done all the research and all the effort that he put into that project. And you might be getting it in your emails, I asked Mrs. Slack if she would send it to me, because I wanted to take time to read the whole thing. It, it was about the swings, the, the swings in West Virginia, he researched all the sites. And even the counties that didn't have a swing, he had researched information about every county in the state. And impressing job for a freshman EL student. I came away feeling really good about it, and I said, I'm looking forward to shaking your hand when you graduate.
Say one more thing about the EL numbers, there are also the students who test out, they'll test proficient, and then the teachers still have to monitor them for two years as per federal requirements, but those students don't count on this official number. So I think we have, it's gonna cause a number of thirty students who are still being monitored, so they require time and effort still from the teachers, but they, we don't get any money for them, they're not on the list.
Well, they still test twice?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
I remember Laura Ramirez, she scored real high, she didn't want to take one. They really coach her to, you know.
Gotta take both of them. It's unfair. I would almost say discriminatory, but, yeah.
We're done with that section? Section two is my usual handouts for the prior month, so this is October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, bank reconciliation at the end of the month, it's not so off a penny, but I, I just deleted it.
I'll give you a penny.
If they're not making them anymore.
It was, that's right, I didn't know what to do with it, it was in Fund Seventy-One, I don't know how I still have a penny in there, but anyway, I will find it and fix it, but anyway. The bank reconciliation's four million three hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. The next sheet is the treasurer's report, which just breaks it down in a different format for you, the prior, uh, month ending balance, the current receipts, as well as the year-to-date ones, the disbursements for the month, as well as the year-to-date disbursements, and then what is in the, remaining in the bank account. Also breaks down the accounts payable and payroll.
For the monthly, as well as the interest. That's a good interest rate.
Yeah, as long as, yeah, and that, that also helps, you know, because that's money that's not assigned to anything, so right now, with having a good interest rate, hopefully that continues, I don't know what the future will hold for the next year, but we can maintain a good interest rate, that will definitely help.
When it says year-to-date, Sarah, it means, it means calendar year-to-date?
No.
It's fiscal, okay.
July one through.
That's good then.
And the four-point-two-five is what we're gonna be charged on our, um, loan.
Right.
So.
The next sheet is the expenditure by object. Expenses listed down the first column, the budget in the second column, expenses to date in the third column, amounts that we have encumbered, you'll see that payroll has been encumbered now and reflected on this report for October in that fourth column. And then the, the last column on the end is just a comparison from the prior year. So that's where, in that fifth column over, at the bottom, you'll see that five million seven hundred and two thousand, that's where we were as of the end of, end of October. So everybody's good with that, turn to the next section, um, these were the final computations for this current year. And they were actually in last year's, um, well, the finals were, preliminaries were in last year's. But I put these in here, um, mainly just for you guys to see. I always think it's interesting currently to see what we lost to charter schools. So the fifth column over, virtual preparatory, preparatory academy. So the fifth column over virtual preparatory, preparatory academy out of the funding that we received was twenty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-seven, and then the West Virginia Virtual Academy was a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-seven. So a hundred and, for, for a total of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
So now our kids that are doing virtual school, we get the money for that though.
Yes, we do get the money for the.
This is a separate.
In Hardy County and the virtual school.
That virtual prep, but in West Virginia, they're different.
They are different ones. And if you keep turning over, it'll start the different steps of the, the state aid that we received. I don't know if you guys want to go through all of that, but we can look at those. Step one's, you know, professional educators, the amount that we receive there, step, and that kind of just goes through there, adding those up. Next page, step two is the service personnel. The next page, step three is the fixed charters for those salaries. Step four is the transportation, excluding the allowance for buses, so that's just transportation. Right beside of it is the bus allowance. Two hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-two for the current year.
That's good.
Step five on the next page is the allowance for professional student support personnel, that's nurses, CIs, counselors.
And school psychologists, I think, right?
They might be under there as well, I, I would imagine. Step six, A, other current expenses, substitute costs, the amount that we receive for faculty senate are across there. Next page is step seven. That's step seven A for instructional programs, step seven B is where we get our technology allocation. Step seven C is where we receive our advanced placement funds, and step seven D is our mentoring funds or teacher and leader induction.
I have a question back here on page five, that's the computations. The, the step allowance for personnel substitute costs, the ninety thousand, isn't that kind of low?
It's low across the board, and that's actually one of the, the meeting that I just had in Canadian for our financial, they actually talked about the amount that we were receiving out of the state aid funding for substitute costs, professional and service.
Being low.
Being low, yeah, about it being low, and different areas that they were going to try to attract. Iya Cumming, which is the state funding's guy, he's, he really is trying to get somewhere with the state aid funding formula. You know, he's been going out to these meetings that they've been having and trying to talk to legislative representatives and folks that are down there to try to get them to understand. Sheena was sharing yesterday.
Yesterday?
We shared about how the funding formula hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety.
Yeah.
Um, and he was talking about that to them when they were at their meeting on Monday. Just, there's a lot that's changed since nineteen ninety.
Well, it it seems that people, we, we need the substitutes because people seem to take, if they have days.
Because they can't use them for anything else, yeah.
They take them, right, because I don't think that they see themselves in a long-term situation there.
Hasn't that changed with the new hires, the system?
Can't use them for anything.
Can't use them for anything, so if you're teaching twenty years, you've got two hundred days to go by by then.
Yeah, based on your retirement system that you're in, now I can still use mine towards years of service, but there are certain that.
But that's it, but you can't convert them to anything, you can't convert them to insurance, you can't convert them to.
Right.
Days of.
Years of service.
Worked.
Yeah, they, you used to be able to buy insurance, I think a long time ago, it was six days, you could buy months worth of insurance.
It used to be three in the hundreds, in the long, in the car, it was two, because you had like seven years in charge.
Oh my gosh. That is amazing, that's a good reason to go into education.
That was the incentive that they gave instead of pay rate.
Right, absolutely.
No one understood that part, had to complain about it.
Yep.
The one town, Michigan, was either sixty-seven, they lost all those six days in lieu of pay rates. I think it's sixteen or seventeen, they lost their days, they get a pay raise, all the days that accumulated, none of them got the stuff. Of course, I had four hundred, I was able to buy like four years of teaching before retiring, it's difficult. Always had my share of friendlies. But that's one of the quirks, and like I said, that's one of the basic ones in education.
That plus the increased constant insurance, you know, that used to be one of the benefits too, was that you had really good insurance.
Free.
That didn't cost, you know, and then plus the retirement and then being able to use your days, and there's used to be sort of justifications for a lower.
Correct, correct.
And salary, but those are slowly going away.
Right.
I don't know what.
No, they used to throw up to you, where you don't even teach, cock nine or about ten months in a year, so you had two months off, well.
How much professional development and all that's due now too.
And back then, you know, your salary was less. It was spread out to twelve months. Right, and, but the benefits you got for having a less salary was you had insurance, you had retirement. But now that becomes a wash, just like you said, no reason, no wonder people aren't going into education.
I just begin teacher salary of the VA, which is more than ten, thirty-eight thousand.
That's probably around there, I, I don't, without having the chart in front of me, I.
You know, you, you figure you got five years of education.
With the five hours, that's.
Short salary.
Oh, okay.
You know, you're already taking it from the high, why would you go into it? Yeah, that's a shame.
And the retirement is still good, but they're just, they're losing some of the other.
Folks.
Right, some of the other, you know, that you can kind of say, hey, but you have this, this, and this.
Well, I never missed some of my days, unless I was, you know, you get your three virtual days, or miss the ladies days, I'd get hungry. I was sick, I was.
My own car, that's like plus years, that's more than that.
It's amazing, I went sick. And, and, but that was the mindset, that's what the old were, today it's like Dick said, it's not that way, how many days I can miss, you know.
And I'm going to miss them all.
But they don't think about the long, they may get sick, like I said, they may get sick and then they have to take them to the bank, if they donated, who the hell are the days without pay?
That's right, I've seen several, you're right.
You mean four years or days?
I assume, that's why they take the days without pay.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have.
Oh, I don't know about this year, but.
We had one teacher that did that. That's recent, she ran for the vice president. Great teacher when he was there, but I don't want to say, you miss, when you've already missed your fifteen days, whatever, first. I said, you know, you have substituted in your classroom as much as you do, you know, since you transferred this hard, and I was horrible.
Well, it's, it's not fair to the kids. You know.
You gotta be there pretty much every day, I mean, there's, we get sickness, maybe three, four, five days a year, but I got fifteen, first November, I got it and more.
Gotcha.
Well, and it makes it hard, it makes it harder than everybody else, because I know when I was a pharmacist at WDU Hospital, we had one of the pharmacists that worked there with us, great gal, good pharmacist, but I mean to tell you.
Her.
Her, she, she, you could count that she was going to have cramps to use up her day, day and a half that we earned each month, you know. Maybe one month cramps, just one day, and the next month, you know, sometimes she'd have cramps twice a month, but anyway, you always kind of knew that.
Something was happening.
Get all Elaine was going to call in, so.
Well, I grew up with little girls, so I went kindergarten, pre-K through my senior year, not missing my day at school.
But one time.
Because it didn't matter if you didn't feel good or not, you, you were supposed to be there.
Right, and we, we recognized the kids for their efforts.
Because I'm there, every day I got more.
More than anybody else, yeah, by someone's seat without.
Yeah, 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 what's the big deal?
They just make fun of me, and then I got to my senior year, I couldn't even do senior skip day, because I was. They will definitely know that I skipped one day on my record, but I wasn't here.
You didn't skip?
I couldn't, Mr. Wise, my dad would have showed up at school that day. I mean, if I missed five or six each year, he probably would have noticed it, but when it would have been the only day you missed, I definitely would have got busted on senior skip day.
You would, for sure. I'm guessing you were the only one.
She was missing like half day of that.
I was not the only one that was there that day.
She never, how many days did you actually miss?
She really didn't miss any.
I didn't miss any.
Missed one though.
Pre-K through my senior year.
You were getting some bad statement for that.
Nobody really cared that much, Sarah. Just Willard, just my dad.
Well, and I guess having the. If you're a kid that missed twenty-five, twenty, thirty-eight a year, you got it and more, you got connected.
Yeah, you'd think this is not at all. You would think.
And I guess having, which Dad was always a stickler too, I don't think he really missed school or anything like that, but I think having the radio stations was, you know, that was back before it was syndicated, if somebody didn't show up for work, you couldn't just, I mean, you had dead air. Because he was always, you know, people are relying on you, people are expecting you to do each.
It's a great lesson, yeah.
Did you get your little certificate every year though?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did make sure I hand wrote my, I would not state, I would be in right, you know, so it meant something more to me.
I think they gave me a hundred dollar savings bond when I graduated, the school did.
That was nice.
You got four years free college.
Right, at least a hundred dollars a year, right?
That'd have been all right.
So what's our plan to supplement these substitute costs?
Well, we just, I mean, as, I don't know if there's a long-term plan other than just, that's part of what it's sent to the the front balance that we have.
We also use.
How much.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, I could run a report to show what the substitute costs were to compare to that, so we could see how much.
That would be good.
Off the top of my head, I don't.
How much we have to pay out of pocket that we're not funded for?
Right, just to see the difference.
We started doing the planning period buyouts, Mr. Harper would remember that, like, there's a form, so if you can't get a substitute, it saves us a little bit of money, if a teacher's willing to give up their planning, we pay that teacher for giving their planning up, and then they cover the class that period, it would really help, should we have blocked, like at Morphon High School, you essentially only had to have three periods covered for a teacher, you'd pay somebody else to do it, then it didn't cost the full amount for a substitute, so we had that piece. I mean, now it's eight period a day, they still can do that, they just get, we're paying for seven periods, because one period, I guess, is planning. We're paying for, bless you, we're paying for seven periods, and it's a lesser amount, but I think in the end, it would still save us money over total substitute costs, but especially if it's a half a day.
One year.
And I'll run that report service.
Dr. Miller, since probably back in the. Your principal, Chris, we did it for ten days.
Yeah.
And you covered, because I had Perkins, he had the whole turkey season on, he'd just have the kids sit down and jib, that's covered. But you got, you got that, you got all the spring options.
And on that same note, our principals and assistant principals spend a lot of time covering classes.
I enjoyed it, I really did, I thoroughly enjoyed it, so, and teaching.
That happens a ton.
It's, it's good, it's good PR and it's good for the teachers' relationships and.
Let's see, where are we, all right, so if we continue on to page seven at the bottom, that'll show you the total basic program allowance, step eight, which just totals all that together, and then they take the step nine, takes out the local share, which is like our property tax, to get to the amount in step ten of what we'll actually receive during this current year from the state aid funding formula.
First column is not the total budget.
It's essentially what we need to operate, right, Sarah?
Right, based on our enrollment and, yeah.
And then they look at that and think locally, you're going to get five million, five hundred thousand, so then we're going to give you from the state level, twelve million eight.
I can see here the payments in lieu of taxes, do you see that?
Yeah, so if, like, if a company, for instance, that solar company that's coming in, if they do a deal of, which is, that would be considered a pilot, that would get deducted off of our amount that we were getting from the state.
But to my knowledge, we've never gotten pilot funds that I can ever remember.
And I don't know that it's real common, we want to pay for twelve counties.
Janet, you need more coffee, please. And I know that there have been deals made with companies, because you read about them, but I don't know that it's a power, does that make sense to anyone else?
Well, and from my understanding, and that's just trying to read the code and see, I don't think that, that, I don't think they have to include the schools, which doesn't make sense to me, but I think the, the commission or, you know, whoever grants the company, I mean, they, they can, that company issues it directly to them for, I don't know, a new, a new state, or a new city police building or something, I don't think they have to factor the school into that, which seems odd to me, since our funding is based on state aid, which is also based on the taxes, it would seem like if you're exempting an organization or, you know, a company from paying those taxes.
Takes away from us.
And also what the state would potentially have to pay, so I, I mean, that's the only reason I would, I'm surprised that they don't have to factor it in, it's just because the state's making up that difference, so that, I would think the state would want to know, or at least have some control over that, but it doesn't appear, now, of course, I'm not an attorney, so sometimes reading that good stuff is, it's on the plot here, but then there's all these, see this section, see that section, you have to put them all together.
Well, it would be, I would think it would be to the advantage that they would have something that they're looking at changing the formula about companies, new companies coming in and not having to pay property taxes, of being able to recoup that loss, now, I, I see the other side of the coin, a, a new company comes in and they're going to have children, and so that's going to naturally, or if you like to hope they have children, and so that's going to increase our numbers, so that will help us, but we need, there needs to be something with that, because it seems like more and more, every company gets a deal when they come in for, for so long. Look at the big Brady warehouse that was in Charleston, that, they got a huge deal there, and then they left when, when the taxes, they had to start paying taxes again.
And they rolled out?
They did, so I think that it, it's just something to keep a thought about.
For sure. For sure.
So, uh, and to kind of weigh whether I. It'd be hard for me to believe that the number of children would be greater and the money to the school would be greater than us getting what we would.
Have to be a substantially large business that needed a lot of folks to move into the area instead of just hiring the people that are already there. That's typically, I think, what happens.
Yeah.
On the next page is the enrollment information. Now, remember, this is currently what we're being funded for this year.
Okay, I just can't see her.
Okay, you're good. Um, and I don't think anything of these were in your binder last year. Um, these are the final ones, the preliminary ones that come out like two days, I think, before our meeting last year. I don't think much had changed other than an adjustment for charter schools. That's usually why they come out with final ones later on because they, they validate those numbers, um, in charter. So all, all of these numbers here should be the same to what we had last year. But the enrollment was two thousand one hundred and eighty-two, after you considered the FTE, it was two thousand one hundred and seventy-one. We had eight students in, um, charter school, eighteen, sorry, students in charter school last, last year. I think this year, you'll see when we look at those later, I think it's six, I believe it was.
Wonder if they graduated or came back to school.
Uh, that's a good question.
I'm betting they came back.
But I recap this later, but I just put these in here, but when we look at the tab later with the certified list stuff, I recap the prior years, like excess and stuff, and like put it in a little spreadsheet there. But these are just, I went ahead and put these in again this year, the final ones, since we had final ones that you can look at or compare, compare to prior year if you want to. No, that just shows what we're funded at.
Okay.
That's the rate that we're funded at, yeah. For service personnel. And this is last year, remember, this is last year.
Okay.
I have current, like upcoming, the most, um, updated ones later on. Section seven.
Okay, what section?
We're about to start section four. Section four, if everybody's ready to move on, is the, um, recap of the utilities for the year to date, um, a look at some of the software and, um, our lease lists. So the first, I'm sorry, it's so small.
Go like that.
So these are the utilities July through current that we had.
I thought last night, um, the other day you mentioned about water leak.
Mm-hmm.
Did anybody ask the PSD?
Like where they make you, typically we do, yeah, typically we do. Um, I don't, I don't know, I'll double check to make sure that they did that. I did talk to Barbie about it and Josh, and they said, Barbie said that this would be the last bill that you'll see that water leak reflected on, because the way that this bill cuts off, it would have included that leak, she pulled the bill from Eugene Rinker when he finished up and looked back. And so this bill should be the last one you see that water leak reflected on, and which would be why it was higher.
Pretty good about, couple now.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll say something to him, make sure we call and ask and see if they can credit us back. She also said that this time of year, um, that East Hardy Elementary's water bill runs higher anyway because it's running down where the field is and they have the concessions and they do more this time of year, I guess, down there near the football field. And I think we caught them watering at one point in time maybe too, so I'm not sure of that. But she said every year this time, it's up more than normal. And it hits East Hardy Elementary because that's the meter that, you know, I guess pulls that in.
I miss those words.
So.
It was a tripod that was watering and she rebounded them, we had a leak and it shouldn't be, there shouldn't be water in them. She was holding it, that wasn't even hooked up.
Yeah, it was.
Well, while it's down there for the kids to play in.
Sitting off to the side, Dixie, thinking about maybe watering one day. Dreaming about it, just dreaming about it.
So the proof making the decision, we still give bits of that?
Yes.
With your mouth.
We, we just, we just did that. Seems like we just did that, or was that two years ago?
I don't know if it was last year, the year, here.
Remember that reason. Um, it hadn't been done for a while and I was trying to get on a routine of doing some of those that we had kind of not been doing for the last ten years or so.
Was it like a three-year cycle, I think? Yeah.
Yeah.
You know something, this is just clear off the thing except that I saw Potomac Addison here. Um, that reminded me. Okay, it's my understanding that East Hardy Elementary School is grandfathered.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, their rate.
Okay, well. I thought that Audrey said in one of those presentations that their electric was the highest.
They're the ones that have that peak, um, how's it work? Like you get billed basically on an average of the peak.
All the others except the grandfathered building.
Okay, it's the different one.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. But she was saying that that was the most expensive school. Now, I don't know if it's, I, I, I couldn't really understand that since it was grandfathered. I, I know I looked at those rates and they really weren't a huge amount of difference from.
Yeah.
Both companies said that.
They've both said that.
Yeah.
They've both talked about it.
We had come in those studies, it was the place to save the.
Yeah, with the solar. Next time we have them in front of us, we'll ask specific questions about.
Those changes that we're making, so that would not affect that grandfathered, the rates from over there?
No, because they had to get, um, they had to go through the, um, electric company and get their permission and all of that stuff in order to do what we're doing to impact it, so no, it, it won't change anything as far as our agreement goes. Um, but I do wanna ask about.
Well, and of course, they are done, we have that one wing that they're not really using.
The basement, the downstairs, yeah. Um, well, I mean, they use it for different things, I think they have art class down there, um, they were doing a PE, they were doing a couple different classes down there, what they were using the space for. And then they had the air cut completely, um, they were growing mold because they had shut the air down to a certain level, but we had to have them turn the fan, yeah, they had to turn the, we have to turn the fans back on and make an adjustment there so that it was not going to be moist and filthy, but, yeah. Four hundred, I think, do you have that?
What is the capacity of that building?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the answer to that is. Capacity. You're just talking capacity like number of students, Matt?
That's max.
Okay.
East Hardy Elementary? Is that the one?
Yeah.
Three hundred and sixty.
Sixty, okay. Yeah, I mean, you've got several of those rooms downstairs, what do you, twenty-five kids a room. I mean, they're maxed upstairs because we only have two per grade level, we have a couple splits there too, but downstairs. That are like, um, that are, yeah, um, title one, I think, yeah. We have one that's title one and then one's teacher's planning area.
There's two planning areas, first one down the hall.
Yeah, the workroom and then the. Yes. So if you think twenty-five there, I don't know, are there eight downstairs, maybe? Seven downstairs, okay. So four hundred, more, am I doing that right now? No, not if I'm twenty-five, I was doing fifty. So it'd be two hundred and fifty, probably more, if I can handle.
So the new, um, the new system at Morphild Middle School.
Mm-hmm.
Um, does it require the same number of filters that we had before? Or a different filter or a more expensive filter?
I haven't heard anything regarding any adjustments or changes needing to be made to the filter system. That has not been mentioned and it's up and running, so I'm assuming the same at the same number. I'll double check, but I haven't heard anything in any of our meetings about changing any of that.
When they determine if the county has more, slow, uh, what's that made, seventy per square mile?
Five, five kids per square mile is sparse, five or less. And that gets us, it was on one of your things, but is it seventy-two point six professional personnel per one thousand students? And fifty-five point something, I think, service, fifty-five point five service per thousand students. That's what hasn't been changed since nineteen ninety, the number of staff you get per kid, for, for kids. You think what a classroom looked like in nineteen ninety compared to what classrooms look like now, tell me, you don't need more people.
Anyone have any questions on any of those? Next one's just a search, you could, Barbie keeps on the software licenses.
Which one you wanna know? Well, the, the description in the middle generally justify, or generally describes it. Um, Advantage, the Verkata, that would be our system that stores all the special ed cameras and we have to have licenses and things for that. Um, the Meraki Dashboard, it manages our internet licenses that we have. Um, Aptigee is the thing that we use to send calls out. The Career Safe and the CVWG, those are both things that they use for CTE. The CEV Multimedia Online, those are ag programs for both of our high schools that they use. The Paper Vision, that's what we use to keep all of our, um, our online scanned in images of personnel files or special ed files, anything that we're scanning in online, that's kept in Paper Vision. Um, the Droplet thing is what we use for professional leave forms. Um, anytime somebody wants a trip request, they do all of that online and then it makes its way through the system to the proper folks to sign off on. Um, the e-dynamic learning, knowledge matters, it looks like it's something that businesses using at Morphild High School. And when you see that, you'll see too, a lot of times it's paid for, like county's not always paying for this, sometimes it's paid out of CTE funds. Yeah, or whichever school's using it. Um, Epic, that is just a cost for Walt who does all of our servers. He's our, um, that manages and upkeeps all the servers in the county. And that's a good, I mean, I know twenty-five thousand seems like it's a lot, but for server management, that's actually, who is that? A really good price. Oh, I was like, somebody's coming to watch, it's just, okay. Um, the tracker program, record book program, those are things that are used at all of the schools. I wanna say that's CTE too, right? To track all their projects and stuff.
Yeah, and that's paid out of the, as you can see.
Over here, yeah. Um, the, the Destiny Program is our library software that stores and, um, manages our libraries. Horizon, that's how we assess our high school kids for the, um, SAT, that's their benchmark system. The Food Service Membership, the HPS, that's the, um, group that we're in for our child nutrition co-op. Adenometrics is how we finger scan and, um, track our students when they eat lunch to bill. Major Clarity, um, why can't I remember?
That is the, um, it's a CTE thing too. It's a career prep thing, uh, middle school oriented.
Okay. Um, Mozile is the device manager, that's how we track and update all of the student one-to-one devices. It's the system that keeps track and manages those. Um, MTS is the kitchen equipment ma- maintenance contract, um, it's an annual license. NCS Pearson would be our testing for the business classes that they use. Parchment is student transcripts, so when kids recorder, request transcripts, that's all done electronically now. Um, Power Schools is there for both the Schoology, which is our, um, student grading system that teachers put student grades in, that talks to Wevis and you can put classes online too that way. And then you have your, um, subsystem that calls out for substitutes that's run through the same company. Um, the Scenario Learning is Vector and that is how we give all of our professional development to our students, or to our staff members annually. And, um, that one tracks it and keeps track of, that way if there'd be an issue and somebody would have had not done something they needed to do, we can prove that they actually completed the course. Uh, and then you go on to the Business U Course, the Business License for Morphild High School, that's a, that's something specific to business class. There's the School Funds Online, which is our accounting software that Sarah uses to, to play math. Does that tell her, it's a school level? Oh, yes, and then the, um, domain licenses for the WICS, um, I don't know off the top of, oh, the school like, okay, that's our, our, um, school sites, our school websites. And then Zones is our Adobe license that we have.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
We go back to, uh, it's, uh, Mozile, uh, it's the one that was forty-two thousand, the SAT. Okay, it's the Horizon.
Oh, we have a grant for that, yeah.
Um, and it says full campus access for SAT assessments, it says three years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's forty-two thousand, so we pay forty-two thousand to test every eleventh grade student every year?
It actually.
That's, that's what we pay for the three year total.
And it's not just eleventh graders, it's actually nine through twelve. So, you know, we have the iReady system that gives us data when we do our benchmarks for everybody up through eighth grade, but there was nothing that told us if they were prepared for the SAT and gave us direct feedback on the SAT. And so that's the system for that. And I don't, we had a, a grant for a portion of that, I don't know if it, that is.
We have paid it through the Title IV grades up through this year.
But we had a, was, the percentage we got off of that, was that off of the forty-two thousand? Was it typically more than that?
It was typically more than that.
And the forty-two is with the discounting grant that we got and then we pay that through Title IV, okay, okay. So we pay for that with federal monies?
And that was.
In the past, yes.
That's a grant that we will no longer have.
And this year.
Right, so, so we'll have to figure out the difference. I gotta put the policy on.
Oh, this is very helpful, good, good, good. Yeah, because before, we just see the bills and we have no idea what they're for, but with this description, that makes it very helpful. Yeah, very helpful.
We're gonna keep it up to date. The next page is leases that we currently have, um, the top one's that small, small one with air gas that is the ag. At Morphild High School, it's two hundred and eighty dollars, that's the annual, three tanks. Of course, we're in our Apple lease. We have small leases with the pay system machines, you can't purchase those, you have to lease them, and then of course the field bikes. So currently, those are the four leases that we have.
So the Apple lease, we're still taking money out of technology.
Technology, um, and what the buyback for the other, the switch out was, and then also out of the funds that, um,
Parents pay.
Parents are paying if they want the, the insurance coverage.
Are most of them, well, probably they're not. Most parents are probably not getting them, it's, it's our toe, toenails or something happens to it.
Yeah, we've had a few that haven't that have paid, I think if there's been a damaged device that they replaced. Yeah, to take care of it.
Well, we shouldn't have given it to kids, or, I mean, that's, but.
We need it, unfortunately nowadays, you can't, I mean, you have to have the devices.
Yeah, and you can't.
Do you guys want to take a break?
I understand the need.
Want a break?
Yeah, I, I just needed to stop.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
All right, next section, everybody's good. Transportation. Usually I give you guys a printout of what we have listed on G R I M's site, but they recently did a rollout to a new site. And when I logged on there to print it off for you guys, it said that we had forty-four ambulance units.
Surprise!
Well, I pulled it up and it said, I'm looking at it, and I thought, five, I saw five. Buses, five buses? You know, like, what is?
I wonder who they got us mixed up with.
I would say by the time I, because I called Adam immediately, he was like, well, let me email. His contact, and the response was very general that we're working on all issues. So I would say that everybody probably not roll forward correctly.
Oh, my.
Because I usually like to show you that what we have listed in total there matches what we have on the state's report that we do. And counting them up, what was on G R I M's site, what we had actually listed was still there. So at least everything that we have entered in the past, like when we got a new bus or a new piece of equipment, all of that's actually there, but they don't add to the totals that's on that recap that they have on their site, so. Because I added them to make sure, I was like, they didn't take away our stuff today or mess with that, but. So we don't have that this time, because they're still working on fixing that, but here is off of the state Department of Education Office of Transportation site that Irina and Josh keep updated. I always like to just point out the number of buses that we have beyond the twelve-year mark that we are no longer receiving credit for or funding for. We currently have fourteen buses in the thirteen and older category.
Now, what did we talk about ordering maybe four new buses this time?
We did, and I have more numbers back here on that as well. We, I can find out for you, but I, I'm not sure.
What page are you?
What is it, bus fifteen? Bus fifty.
Is that the one that Yonker?
It's November thirteen.
That fellow came and did a.
I'll ask him. Um, I mean, I know the one had to be, what was the date of the inspection? Okay, it wouldn't show up on this. I don't know. Yeah, we haven't sold any.
We sold two, but I'm assuming they're the ones that are marked September, yeah, great, I'm assuming there are those two that are marked September.
Those that are marked September dates.
Yeah.
Has structural damage, is not worth getting fixed, you're going to do it at this, do it at the sale. Has structural damage, it's not worth getting fixed, we were going to do it at the sale. I think it hit a tree, hit a tree, he mistyped, it said you get a tree. Uh, I don't know. Hit a tree.
Is that where he backed into?
Is that the tree that they sent? We kept hitting. Is that the tree that picked up the one being?
Same tree? No, because he told me, I asked about that one, because that, remember I told you the tree was hit twice? It was the same bus that hit the tree twice, same bus. So that bus should be back in this week. And the other one you asked me about was, should have written it down, almost fixed also. Same tree, I was incorrect last time, seventy-eight was back this week. Okay, 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 no, that was it, that was it. He said he was incorrect, that one, they said it was structural damage, bus seventy-eight should be back this week. And he says, um, that's the one that hit the tree two different times, had structural damage that wasn't worth fixing. Same tree, yes, same tree. Okay, so then I need to know, I'm assuming we didn't file. Two different drivers. One was a sub, I know. It's the tree, you probably need to have removed. Would you know if we filed it on insurance, through insurance?
Josh usually does.
He's driving, see if he gets back to me on that. So that one was what number? How old was it? Was it one of the older ones?
Fifteen years.
Okay, well, that's good. But that one pulls out of our value, right? Both were different subs, I did not file for insurance, we got an estimate and realized the bus wasn't drawing money. Andy said it wasn't worth fixing, should get rid of because it's not drawing any money because it's out of the twelve-year range, so they thought it would be worth one that would just be. It's the same, it was the one that hit the tree from the two different subs, well, no, they didn't file the insurance claim. He said, um, they got an estimate and realized the bus wasn't drawing any money. I don't know. But aren't we, so those ones that are over, the goal would be to eventually get rid of those ones that are over twelve years, right?
Oh, yeah.
Don't they drag down your average? They just don't count in the value.
You're, you're just done getting.
Just not getting anything for them.
You still want to have your better, right, you still want to have your better buses out of that bunch as backups, I guess.
He said they sent pictures to Bluebird, and Bluebird did an estimate. Now that I don't know, but we still have it, so if you guys decide that you want us to look more into it, we certainly can do that. Structural damage cannot be fixed by a local person, it must be through the manufacturer, it would not pass inspection, he said. Got it, okay.
All right, so the next piece that I have in here was to go back to the leasing, what we had originally talked about with leasing. And I wanted to give you two different scenarios. Two different scenarios. Just to give you an idea of how the leasing works and how the formula works. So here, every time we buy, the state, we start with the state, the state takes bids on the buses, and what it would cost. And there's always one company, Melvin, you probably remember, what always comes in the lowest? I can't remember what it is, what kind of bus. There's International, there's Bluebird, and then there's a third one that always comes in the lowest. Thomas, yes, Thomas, thank you. And that's usually the one they go back. So they go by the lowest bid that comes in, and that's what we're reimbursed for. So whatever that amount is, we receive, if we purchase a new bus, then we receive reimbursement for twelve years. However, each year we're reimbursed, it changes with that amount. So on this page, you can see in F Y twenty-four, eighty-six thousand five hundred and five was the state, the, the bid that the state received.
Fourteen, I think.
Fourteen, sorry. F Y fourteen.
I was like, twenty-four is not a state, yeah.
So we would have received one twelfth of that for the bus that we purchased in twenty thirteen for year F Y fourteen. Then in F Y fifteen, we would have received one twelfth of the new state bid received, if that makes sense.
So we pay for them upfront to get reimbursement or full.
Right, but they do adjust that reimbursement, you're not locked into what you paid for, or what the bid is that year divided by twelve. It does change. So when you're looking at these numbers, so for instance, here I used a bus that we purchased in F Y thirteen. We purchased a bus that year for ninety thousand three hundred and ten dollars. So by the time that we've had twelve years of reimbursement through twenty-five, we would have made three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars off of that bus. And that's going to vary depending upon when you purchase it and what the average changes. So on the next sheet over, I did one just assuming, well, we did purchase a bus in twenty twenty-one for ninety-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-six for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then I did the last years assuming that F Y twenty-five's value was the amount for the next eight years. It should go up each year. On that bus, we will actually make sixty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars.
If we lease.
Just that bus that we purchased in twenty-one will make that much, having purchased that bus, because of the value increasing.
Hayden can drive now.
Oh, yes, Hayden can drive now, you can just.
Just drive himself his truck.
Drive himself car.
An I L deal.
Yeah. So it's, it's kind of a hit or miss, but if you need to replenish your fleet, um, build it up a little bit, you're not going to lose money by getting buses, um, unless the interest rate overrides the increase. I don't remember off the top of my head, but it would be, it would, that sounds about right, because we had, we had a few thousand left over last year, and then this year's is two hundred and eighty-four thousand. No, I cannot put them in there. Well.
Probably part of your leasing thing, I have them, an email, I have them, an email. I'll have to find them, but I did have them. There were, um.
We met this fellow, that Jeff Smell, was that him the other evening?
Yeah. We would have to get rid of, because we have one too many spare, one point two five too many spares for our transportation rating, so we, if you add four more, you would need to get rid of four buses. Yeah, or, because we're over in the spare category. Yeah.
Now, where did you see that, on the back here?
No, I have that in my, I have that in my transportation rating scale.
Okay.
That I don't have all of, but.
She's looking up the cost per bus, but when I asked Jeff just to give us an idea of what the payment would be, that acquisition cost at the top there, the four hundred and seventy-three thousand, it included two seventy-seven passenger buses and one handicap, and they were all Bluebird. Now, that doesn't tell you what they were individually, but, um, that was for three buses. I think it ended up being sixty-nine.
Here's the quote for the special ed bus, is this what? Does that help?
Yeah, one seventy-six.
Three seventy-four.
Hundred seventy-six thousand three seventy-four, and what's it say, passenger?
I'm sure it does, good God almighty, there's a million different.
Well, it's sixty-nine, so it says.
Sixty-nine seated, actual capacity sixty-nine seated, yeah.
Seventy-seven passenger.
Seventy-seven passenger, but sixty-nine seated because of the handicap thing. That's a twenty-twenty-seven Bluebird.
But how many handicapped could you get on that bus, just one?
I think they only take one, yeah, wheelchair accessible. Can you? Okay, okay.
And so one handicapped person and sixty others?
And sixty, yeah, sixty-nine if you have one wheelchair, and then I guess, how many would you take out per, how many seats, is it two seats? So they count three a seat or two a seat when they're doing those, when they talk, three, so you would lose six more kids if you did another wheelchair. An aide? Oh, no, we do, five or six? Is it more than that now? Yeah, we do, we do.
Now, are they hired separately, or are they the aides at school that just get extra money to go and ride the bus?
We look at the school that the kid goes to, and then, and the, if the aide that's with the kid doesn't want to ride the bus, then we look at the least, we offer it to the most senior because it's extra money, right, Orin? And then we go down to seniority list to the least senior, and we get to the least senior, we tell them, as long as it's within their daily hours, we, we make those folks ride it. And then sometimes we've had to open it up, um, you know, outside that school, but typically we're able to find somebody in the building. Everybody we hire, we hire with transportation duties, so that we can say, hey, you have to ride the bus with such and such, for the, for the E-cats and aides, that is. Here, I guess.
What do they do for that person?
Um, just sits with them, make sure that they're seated and, you know, it depends on, it depends on what the needs is, you know, are of the kid, of course, but you have some that have seizures that might need medication, and then you have some that are just behavioral, that they, kid doesn't sit down for thirty minutes if somebody's not basically sitting there with them the whole time. So that's what they do. Is that what you need to? Say what now? Yep.
I don't have my phone.
Yeah, no, I got you, I got you. Four seventy-three. Two ninety-eight. One forty-eight, four sixty-two.
So then a, um, regular seventy-seven passenger Bluebird would be a hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two. A hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two.
So he bases the lease on the hundred and fifty-seven. If you break down the four hundred and seventy-three.
It's on one handicap bus and two regular, that's what I asked him to do. Because Josh had said that we were going to need a handicap one, so I approved one of the, one of the handicap ones in there.
He already asked for the cell of the buses, Josh, yeah?
Yes, that's where I just gave her those numbers from in the email that I had. We can make it at the next board meeting. So I think that we were prepared, but then we were going to go with Bluebird or, um, Interna- is it International? And I think that there was some confusion about what you guys wanted to do, so we wanted to talk about it today and see if you had a preference one way or the other. Because I don't care.
Bluebird and International, same price?
International's a.
A little bit more?
Little bit less, oh, I thought it was a little bit less. Not by much, I think they were very similar, I think they were very similar, um, in cost. And, and it doesn't, I mean, if you guys want to, the, the bus allowance came in a little bit higher than I was expecting.
International's a little less, yeah.
So you, there's enough in there that you could purchase two seventy-seven straight out for one? There might be enough in there to purchase one. The four hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and ninety-eight.
You said there's three something?
Here's the International quotes.
Yeah, because we got two hundred and eighty-four thousand for this year is what we got funded. And then we had a little bit of carryover because there wasn't enough in there last year to.
Wouldn't we do that or just pay it, pay it right out and suck it up?
We can do that.
Let's explain the benefits.
You are.
But don't you make money based on the interest rate and what we're.
Well, it depends on, it depends on the value of the bus and if they go up or not.
Yeah.
And I guess if you want to replace, if you need to replace the fleet or you don't need to replace the, I don't know if it's important that we have more newer buses or, or what the cost of buses are going to do going forward.
Well, they've increased fifty percent.
They have.
Looking at the thing.
They've gone up quite a good bit. I don't know if that will continue, I don't know if the tariffs will.
Five eighty-seven. Do you want to see that?
Or not?
This, this is International. Yes, if we're leasing it, they treat us as if we own it. Internationals. Seventy-eight.
So your actions are true.
And Bluebird, now which one were we having problems with that they did a. Okay. Okay. Hey, you don't want this match.
And I think that's totally fine. I mean, I don't think anybody has any strong feelings about one or the other, so if you guys prefer, we stay with the Bluebird.
International's about two thousand bucks.
That's a lot. It's been in that much, that's not a lot.
Right.
Last year, how many buses we got? Because we got the extra one because of the.
No, it wasn't, yeah, it's last year we decreased. Two last year.
And we were supposed to get that free electric bus.
And they talked, no, no, they stopped, they stopped, the, the manufacturing company shut down, so they stopped producing. They said that out of all of the ones that were supposed to go across the state, they thought maybe three counties got them. Yeah, we were. That would have been great, a free bus to be a street, that would have been great.
To leasing over purchasing.
Well, it just depends. There's, there's no advantage unless the alternative is just not to purchase buses. I mean, so then you would obviously, you know, if you didn't have the funding or if you needed additional buses or you felt your fleet could use additional buses, then there potentially is a benefit to leasing. Like, for instance, it's going to depend on a lot of factors, but take the bus that we purchased in FY21. Having that bus for 12 years, we made sixty-four, or will make sixty-four thousand or more money off of that. Had we not purchased that, we would have made zero. Had we leased it, it would be one-third of that. Cost is about sixteen, seventeen dollars. So obviously, if we had the money to pay for it outright, we're making the most off of having that bus. Not having the bus, we make zero. If we did have the money outright and we leased it, we still would have made forty-eight thousand off of it, off having it.
Okay.
Two-thirds of. But it's just, it's just a.
So the benefit to leasing is if you increase the fleet value enough to bring in more money by the increase in fleet value to more than cover what you're paying for the lease, then you're getting new, then you're potentially making money off of that process.
Making money and you're increasing the condition of your, your fleet and having newer buses. But if you hit a year where the bid only comes in a couple thousand more each year, then you're probably not going to make up the difference or you're just going to break even. I mean, obviously, it's always better not to take out a loan if you have the funds to pay for it on your own.
So is your recommendation just buy what we have the money to buy this year?
My concern is we just, the debt level just took.
Yeah.
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand and, um, right, and a year for a minimum of three years. So that's another.
Well, but if we've got two hundred and some.
Right.
In the kitty, that would pay, and you'd still have a hundred left over, right? You'd say leasing. No, I'm confused what you're saying. If the, if the payment is one seventy-six, then work two eleven or whatever. That would leave us thirty, forty in the kitty.
But that's supposed to be six for three years.
Correct. But next year, you're going to have that same amount in the kitty, or you want to have another three hundred or two hundred?
There's also that aspect, you can look at it to where you're not, you're not spending out all your bus allowance money, so you're leaving some there as a cushion. That makes you feel better. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways to look at it.
Cushion of period.
You should have what you're getting back to pay that lease and then some.
But if an emergency happened or something like that.
We could save fifty-five thousand if we paid it right off in interest. But.
Over three years.
Over three years, you could save fifty-five thousand. But if budget is tight, then it makes more sense to lease it. So the pressure's on you to make that decision.
So how about this? How about, we'll, we'll let Sarah run some numbers and look at likelihood, risk, value, that kind of thing, and bring you something at the next meeting that she's at, but are you guys wanting Bluebird or, or International? I think that right now is the thing we have to do first. Bluebird? You okay with Bluebird?
Yeah, I think we would stay.
Okay, so we'll stick with Bluebird, which will give us a starting point then to finalize, that's the route we're going. And then with that piece, you can run some, some numbers and talk some risk and present that to them at the next meeting that they can vote on if they want to lease or. You don't get, have to make the decision, you just have to give them all the file information.
If you do a three-year lease, but after the first year you want to pay it off, you can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, that might be an option until we see if we get this five hundred that we've invested or angle. If we're really only going to be paying two fifty, if that comes out, then that means it's not going to hit. Our budget is hard, then maybe it makes sense to pay this at all.
Yeah, I don't want to take out a lease for the, for the sake of borrowing money. My, my thing is, is if we can use it and manipulate the system to make money.
Oh, yeah.
I feel like that's, that's the only reason I would want to lease them, is to make money.
Just so we're using the bus replacement money to pay the lease.
Absolutely. Right, right, right.
Absolutely. That's just sitting there and issues for something else we're in deep duty.
Well, yeah, if we get to the point where we have to use that money for something else, we have multiple other problems, so. Yeah.
I think so.
Not, not for a while, not for a while though, so that's the goal, is to stay away from that.
I would say a lot of counties have been, and that's why they lifted their restriction on.
To let you do that, yeah. But that got us into a hole and we had to do that too. We're just now getting to where our values back up to, to be able to buy buses like normal, so.
Right, because we want to stay away from that.
Well.
And we'll keep increasing your.
Says we got fourteen buses that are thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year old or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, me is not good.
Those are the ones that.
Those are the ones that we keep sinking money into to get repaired and they're always in the middle of stuff.
I don't think they are.
That's a factor too. I mean, now, you increase, if you could save some of the money you're spending on repairs and maintenance by buying a new, right, that would have to factor in as well, but I don't know how to make that.
And we had said we need to.
We get it, and we get it back too on that reimbursement, that ninety-five percent.
But I hear what Mel said. If you have a bus that's not causing you problems, you're just not getting money back from it. And i- if it's not causing problems, then you can maybe keep it another one or two years.
We have to get rid of four or five of them because we're over in our, in our camp. So we, we do have to get rid of bus, a number of buses. Well, I'm saying four or five if you're going to buy four.
That's true.
Yes, there's a spreadsheet that he wrote and it keeps on that. Okay, I can ask for a copy.
Yeah, and as soon as it costs you money, they money, so. But we had wanted, it was my understanding that we decided that we would go with that number thirteen and try to replace four buses this year. And then Josh said we needed a handicap bus. And so now we're down to just three.
And we did need a handicap bus because that's what we had to borrow from Grant County. When we have one that, of those that needs repaired, it puts us in a bad spot, and we had another student that needed transportation, yeah.
Well, is the one that we borrowed from Grant County, is it worth trying to buy?
I don't think it's for sale, we just borrowed it for a day. Yeah.
Okay.
They just let us use it for that day, which was really nice.
So I don't know.
Sarah, can you figure out what she's saying, gets four buses? She said that would add one forty-eight, basically, so that would make you six fifty-something, about sixty. But that would still, if you did the four-year lease, keep it under the two-eleven. So your lease payment would still be less than what you want to get reimbursed, but then you'd get four buses and.
Fleet value should significantly go.
Need to be four years, three years.
Increases your fleet value significantly.
Yeah. And, and then, again, if we did four-year lease and was able to make the payment with the bus reimbursement from the state or whatever, that makes. Now, again, you wouldn't have your little kitty in that for that bus.
Right, you'd have a little, but not for a new bus each year, you'd have to, two years in, you might be able to squeak out one.
We want to go back to what you said, try to get four.
Depending on the value.
Three. I think the four-year lease would allow you to make the lease payment with the bus reimbursement.
Four plus a handicap first.
No.
Three with the handicap.
Yeah, I can have a total four.
Total four.
But then we say.
Put that on the next sheet.
You're going to use your bus replacement money for four years.
Four years.
So how are you allowed to change the buses the following years if you even have replacements in the just pay out these?
And we're going to be with all ones again.
I, I think you wouldn't have it the first year, but I think that there would be enough, I, I think if you're looking at two-eleven, what do we normally get now? For the current value, what's our bus replacement amount? Two-hundred and something this year with the current value, but if you put four new buses in that value, I'm betting you're going to at least, bet you're close to doubling it. With the, with the value of them?
No, because there's.
In two years after you pay it?
I mean, it's over twelve years.
That's what I'm saying, can we ask?
Fifteen or twenty percent.
So if you don't.
It might increase by fifty.
By half?
No, that'd be, right, this year we got two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Not percent.
Yeah, but we got about two hundred and eighty-four thousand, so next year we have no buses going off, which is a good thing. So we should at least get two eighty-four at whatever rate the new bid comes in, plus.
The value of the.
The value of four of whatever the bid comes in.
So it should be a third?
So.
Or a little more? Because I'm thinking twelve buses in the, in the count, you see my math?
It's only going to increase by about fifty.
Yeah, because you have all those that aren't worth as much diluting it out.
Is your fifty thousand?
They're all worth the same, they're all going to be worth the same if they're within that twelve-year period.
Okay.
But the value is.
They're going to be one twelfth of whatever the value comes, the bid of value for next year.
Okay.
Even the new ones?
Even the new ones.
Okay, I was thinking the new ones were going to be worth more because they were newer.
No, you still get that.
It's like John Carter off the line.
Yeah.
That sucker just draw.
But you get the new bid amount each year divided by twelve.
So the question then would be if you did, if you couldn't buy them that first year because you had four new ones, would you have enough the second year in there to buy a bus? Maybe? Probably? I think that's an important piece, like, yeah.
If you're leasing them, you would.
Yes. So tell them that.
If they're going three years or four years, if they're going four years, we definitely would.
Yeah. I think that's, I'm okay with it, not one year buying a bus if we just bought four, but then if you go one more year, then we're okay. Right, to make your payment.
It's just going to be challenging if it gets twelve buses in four years, three years. Unless.
Yeah, we just don't have the money.
From the bus. Not to offset it, but if it was offset even closer by a third year half.
Because we should save that two hundred and fifty.
Right.
And because if not, there's prescribed chat.
Right.
And even though you wouldn't be getting, you're looking at doing it the normal way, getting what, two buses? This year, if you, if you don't lease it, two or one?
We said two or a handicap.
If we pay for it outright, you wouldn't be able to get more than two.
So you're getting two new ones now, and then you could buy typically two, right, the following year. So the difference would just be you would have four all at once instead of four, two now, two the next year. But we were just talking, and I think the first year, you wouldn't be able to buy any buses, but you should be able to add one the second year with what you had. So then that would be five in two years versus four in two years, so.
Yeah, I mean. So we can replace the old ones with new ones, that means.
Well, hopefully they don't have.
Soon we'll all get, get an increase in, back from the state, right? Because our overall value would have increased.
Yeah, we just need to get those ones off the end.
Overall value increases, we'll get more back from the state, right?
Just do some more to.
Yeah, run some numbers, see if we can figure out.
Say.
And we can buy, I mean.
I, I mean, I don't think we have any more money to spend, you know, it's like, we need to close our pocketbooks.
If there's, if it's going to cost us any money out of the general fund, we don't need to lease it. The lease option is only.
What concerns me is the second or third year, when you have the four-year lease and you're using your bus replacement money to pay that lease, somewhere you're going to suffer those second, third, fourth year and about nine buses.
What is the difference?
And I think every bus driver should have a new bus.
Right, agree, agree.
So like this year, I mean, if you look at it, if we purchased, it'll be about the same place. If we did the first one, the three-year.
Are the rates different for three-year and four-year?
Yeah.
We get a better rate if we did it? Goes up a half?
Not about much.
Yeah.
Not that much different.
Yeah.
Why couldn't we, why is the entire on this than on the other loan that we just signed?
It went out for bid, and that's just the bid that came in for the one we just signed.
Okay, so potentially be less.
Uh, these are the current rates. Vehicles, it's typically higher on vehicles than it is on.
On real estate.
On real estate, that's just.
Because you're going to lose your value?
Yeah, instead of gain.
I keep wanting to call him Jeff Smell. Smell, it's the smell.
So you're getting two eighty back?
This year's was two hundred and eighty-four thousand, I believe.
And what's the first lease payment?
It should be one twelfth of the bid amount that was received, times how many buses we have under twelve years or younger. If that makes sense. If that makes sense. Yeah. You don't get, you've already been paid out for those, not getting any additional from the state.
I don't think you can keep getting four every year. I think you'd have to get four with the lease and then do it for three years or four years. And then with the money you're saving up that's left over after the payment's made, once you get enough in that pot, then you buy a bus with that money. I don't think you can keep adding four. I don't think that's a realistic thing. But I think you could do four, if the math maths, I think you can do four and have enough left over that the... Next year, you don't buy a new one because you just got four, but then the next year, you could add a fifth one. And then the next two years, when it would be the last payment, you should have enough to buy another one, which should be six buses in four years. Versus the, I guess, depending on how you do it and what you have, what you would buy otherwise. And you should be making a little, you should still have a little extra money left over.
But we usually buy two buses every year. So, two, four, six, eight, we have eight buses, and this other way, we're just going to have...
Well, I'm counting on the amount we're getting back going up then, is what I'm thinking. Because now you've replaced, you're adding all those newer buses to your fleet.
Overall.
So you wouldn't, you'd be getting, yeah.
Yeah, so if we get two this time, we might be able to get three the next time, and then two, and then three, so that'd be six, of course, ten.
Why don't you, will you want to have Sarah just run scenarios and give you estimates on each? And then we'll, we can put it on an agenda item and you guys can examine it and decide which option you think is... Is the best and... We can go either way?
We don't have to use anything from the general budget.
Correct. I agree. I agree. We don't have that to use.
After the three sheets that show the different interest rates in the years, I just put the transportation allowance in there. If anyone wanted to look through that, it just shows the operation and maintenance services and what the reimbursement we receive. We're still considered sparse, that's the ninety-five percent, the county transportation allowance. Additional, we don't have any alternative fuel buses, those are the counties there that receive additional for those. The insurance that we get as part of the transportation allowance. The current bus fleet replacement value is there. You can see there's our amount, two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-two. We have five paid-in-lue folks. That shows the amount that we paid in lieu for twenty-three, twenty-four. And the average amount they use to get our reimbursement there, average rate across the state, they just that for what we get reimbursed for the people's paid-in-lue. Then we have the operation and maintenance for the VOTAC. Where they get a percent. And we have the total amount, the maximum allowance, which you can see we were under, not a whole lot, but we were under.
Melvin, can I have a ruler, please? Thank you. Thought maybe you were keeping them like napkins there.
You just keep them up there.
Like he does, like he keeps his napkin.
And I cooked my hand, so I wouldn't be cutting while I was writing, and she comes along with a ruler and cracked those knuckles. Ooh, I hit a B word again. You should make me so mad.
Is Berkeley not funding for additional buses because they had an increase in enrollment?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Page four is the mileage, total mileage for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Oh, my God, which table was behind?
Five.
Okay, so page four, all right.
It's the total mileage for twenty-three, twenty-four, because remember this is always two years behind.
We still reimburse certain counties like Tennessee, say that spending four buses to get extra money.
For buses? They get extra, they get extra money in the formula based on a ceiling of students or floor, I guess, fourteen-hundred, they get reimbursed. We're funding based on fourteen-hundred students.
Whether they have it or not.
Yeah.
The economy of the state.
Yep. Operation, maintenance, and contracted services is there. You can see what our allowance was for twenty-four, twenty-five versus twenty-five, twenty-six. The costs we paid out actually decreased. So that was, that was a good thing. Insurance, you can see the same, that went up across the board pretty significantly.
And that's grand, right? Well, but we had several actions. But I don't know if that would affect that.
It all carries across the state as an average, so everybody's actions are all counted together.
Everybody that hit a tree hard, I saw.
Lifted on trees.
We still kids, right?
That's right. So our current bus replacement value, if you want to look at that there, went up almost thirty-five thousand dollars from twenty-five to twenty-six. Doesn't give you the whole picture of the lease, you can see by replacing, by continuing to replace the last couple of years, not skipping any years. It is going up. Payments in lieu of transportation on the next page, operation, maintenance, and contracted services for the vocational center. And then the total transportation allowance, less limits is on the last page. I'll ask the questions. That was more for you guys just to look at and see those numbers.
What's the percentage you get now, the value of your bus fleet, what percentage of that do you have?
So the value that we're getting is one-twelfth? Yeah. All of the buses from here to younger. Yep. Everybody's ready to move on? Everybody good? Next section is child nutrition, food service. This is the same kind of breakdown I usually give you guys, revenue that we've received through October thirty-one, twenty-five. And just because it's delayed a month, I usually take the reimbursement that we're going to get for October and add it in here, and then show the expenses through October thirty-one, twenty-two-five. So if we do that, currently, we're in the hole with child nutrition, fifty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. However, the summer program is setting with sixty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars in it. So, some of that, I think, is in the lease to learning food, so I think she may have paid some of the food for it to just the regular child nutrition. So if you couple those together, we're currently actually to the good right now by twelve thousand dollars. Which I can tell you last year, just as a comparison.
God bless you.
And that doesn't mean things could change or something breaks down or you got it replaced.
I know one thing, I'm cold. Are you all cold?
Last year, we were negative forty-eight thousand.
Yeah, you should have told me. I'll crank her up.
I hope you're about ready to gag at that.
There we go.
And then behind that, you can just see that's where I got these total expenditures for the month, for the month, for the year to date. Those three pages, then the total revenue is behind it. Skipping to the next spreadsheet I did, it shows you the general fund transfers from the last several years. This prior year for FY twenty-five, we transferred from the general fund to cover child nutrition or make it whole, six-hundred-and-one thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and seventeen cents. So currently, in FY twenty-six budget, when I did that budget back in March, I put seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars there to cover it because we consistently were going up there on the out each year. So hopefully, there's some excess there at the end of the year, and we won't need, we won't need seven-hundred and forty cents to cover it.
Um, I know that the food service, the... Have we ever added up how much cooks everywhere cost us personnel and see if this is how close this figure is to what...
Personnel costs.
We're having to move in.
We can do that.
I think...
I mean, I've done that. We looked at that late, last year, a couple of different times to show her that...
Bless you.
I think she thought I was...
Stirring the dust.
I think she thought that I was saying that she was going in the hole. So I tried to show her a couple of times, no, we understand that the personnel is coming out of there. My concern was the significant increase that it started taking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Because even with, you know, the small salary increase, the raises the last, not the past year, but the two years prior, even with those, that wasn't justified.
Yeah.
Yeah, we for sure need to take that account into account that, you know, taking the salaries out there will definitely make a difference, and we just leave the salaries in there because it's too hard
Sure.
to change for, you know, how are you going to allocate? Are you going to say they're the ones that are over formula, or they're the ones that are under formulas that are covered, or they're not covered or allocated percentage, so...
We have them as fair funds.
We just leave it all in child nutrition so we can see exactly what the cost associated with child nutrition.
And those cooks that are in there, are they in the formula as well?
Yes, they are in the formula. Yes. That's what, that's what I was meaning by saying. We really have the funds to pay for them over here, so when we do transfer funds over from general fund to make child nutrition whole, really, some of that should have been allocated there anyway because we are getting to fund the core salaries. It's just hard to say what percent would be, you know, I mean, you could do a percentage, I guess, of the amount you're over.
In the end, you got to make it whole anyway.
You got to make it whole anyway.
Yeah.
It'd just be interesting to see, so you would know that, okay, so if we're having to put in seven-hundred-and-forty thousand, and when we find out that, gee, five-hundred thousand is personnel.
Yeah.
But we can get that, because that's easy, that'll be easy to pull.
And their retirement and all that.
That's easy to pull.
Their total costs. So that way, we know exactly what we're not... It would have to be food or equipment.
Right, what the difference is.
But you do an equipment list.
A lot of times, the funding for equipment comes separately from the state. You do grants for those equipment pieces.
So...
I'm really...
And the reimbursement rate of meals has changed.
For a while, right?
Lots of significantly. I think it changed two cents, a nonsense or something like that.
And we increased...
Food has gone up tremendously, and I think it would give us a good idea exactly how much how much more we're having to spend on food.
I'm hopeful that what we have budgeted this year, we don't need, and that there's a gap there. I'm really hopeful.
There's also been some things that have been addressed or fixed, like it was brought to their attention that the system that the state says we have to use was miscalculated ingredients and stuff that need to be purchased to make the meals. Yeah, that, a lot of food lost, a lot of that food that was being lost or wasted or overmade.
I think we lost two freezer pools of food that they never wanted to talk about. It was kind of a whispering secret, but I think we have that fixed now.
No, we're hoping it won't happen again.
To, to my understanding, with the freezer alarm system.
How many?
With the, no, with the freezer alarm system.
How many years would you like to look at that personnel?
Oh, just the last couple. No sense in, I mean, what do you all think?
I think just three years.
Yeah, because that's, that's, we can't get that by, you know, it's just for reference.
Do we not get four kind of brand or fucking local ones to take it?
We've received a couple, they're very small, but yes.
But we're required
That's what I said.
For, is it five percent?
Seven percent.
That has to be locally purchased. Maybe it's more than five. I don't know. But we are required a certain percentage to be locally purchased. It's either, this is how, how out of that, it's either five or thirty.
Big difference.
You thought it was seven, okay.
I don't think it's thirty.
No, thirty sounds high. It might be five to ten percent maybe, but I was like, is it five? And then all of a sudden, I thought, no, it's thirty. That's not right.
I honestly don't know.
She'll know for sure. Yeah, yeah. She's doing a great job.
There's any, the one grant that we have was a leftover grant from last year that just wasn't all spent out, so I'm not even sure if there will be any additional grants.
I'm not sure at this point either.
For local, local purchasing. We can find that out. Keep going, everybody good?
Where to find this one? Where are you?
Yeah, that'll be...
Yes, okay.
Next tab, certified list. So the certified list file, this was the report that we submitted for FY twenty-six. And this includes that three-hundred-and-twelve that I've circled at the bottom includes professional and service personnel. So for FY twenty-six that we just submitted, it's three-hundred-and-twelve point four-nine-four STP. The year before FY twenty-five, on the next page, next sheet, the total was three-hundred-and-eight point nine-nine-four. Total employees. So on the next page, I did sort of a reconciliation between the two years. I started with FY twenty-five. We had one-hundred-and-eighty-six point four-nine-four professional, one-hundred-and-twenty-two point five service, which gave us the total that's reflected on the page before of three-hundred-and-eight point nine-nine-four. After the certified list was completed in FY twenty-five to this year, so between, between the years, we added third-grade aides, which was implemented this current year, we added seven of those, a clerk position at Morefield High School, an autism mentor.
Yeah, what's that?
Do you know where that was? Autism mentor?
Let me think. I will, let me think.
Kindergarten position at MBS, yes. Sorry, I should have put that on all those and us. The autism mentor, wouldn't be county wide, would it? I was just trying to think why didn't...
No, I'm trying, did we lose one from like Morefield Middle that went up to Morefield High? Do you note that if we moved one?
I don't have any down below that we lost.
Okay.
At least not as categorized as that unless they were something else.
Where did we have it?
Morefield High School. Because we did have two secretaries there. One secretary left, the seventh, I see one secretary, and we just hired a clerk.
Autism mentor, Morefield intermediate?
That cheapness.
Yeah, I think it's Morefield intermediate too.
It is, yes. They can't perform as many duties, but yes. A special education teacher at Morefield Elementary School and a title one at Morefield Elementary School. We lost half of a cook position. A pre-K position at MES, a title one position, half of a title one position at MES. An EL position at MIS, half of that. We combined Spanish and library at East Starry High School. So we lost half of each one of them. So that would be a full position there. We lost a social studies position at Morefield High School, a math position at Morefield High School, an English position at Morefield High School. Half of a fourth grade and half of a third grade, Sheena had taught.
That position, do you rate them safe when we came off the block?
Um, yes, it is. And the MIS is because we did a split third, fourth instead of adding one each.
We lost half of each one of those teachers, then EL, half at Morefield Middle School and title one, half at Morefield Middle School.
Where's your other half of your EL? MIS up there. Okay, I saw it. Again, sorry. Gotcha.
Together. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Um, so that gives the remaining for FY twenty-six, a hundred and eighty-one point four nine four professional, a hundred and thirty-one service. And that's three hundred and twelve point four nine four for the year, which is on the first sheet.
All right.
Yes.
Who are temporary part-time employees?
Temporary part-time would be our interventionists.
Anybody that's working less than the hundred and eighty days and isn't offered benefits.
And do, and do they count on this?
No.
So the, the interventions like J.J.
They're being funded out of grant funds. So whether they were part-time or full-time, they wouldn't show on this. This is only out of general fund, state aid funding. So anyone that we have hired that's paid out of a grant, they're not reflected on this because they're, they're funded in another area.
Funded in a different way.
Maybe we not have anybody that part-time is funded under this with, with that.
The only one we would have had would have been gifted, I think, is a half, a full-time, half-time. Meaning they only, I call them full-time, half-time because that's helped make sense to me in my head, but they work every day. They're a full-time employee as far as the benefits and all that goes, but they're only working half-days.
They would be considered temporary part-time.
Right. They have access to benefits. They have a contract annually.
Their FTE just would have been less.
Yeah.
So how did someone like Mr. Simmons, Brett Simmons, count? Does he?
He does not.
Full-time?
He's, no, he's part-time temporary, right?
Yes. I was just gonna say, he doesn't count here because he's also grant funded.
Yeah, yeah.
Paid out of.
Through a mentor grant. So we get a ment, a pot of mentor money out of title four?
Step seven.
Sorry, step seven D, step seven Z. I make, sometimes I make them up. Step seven E, yeah, step seven something, step twenty-nine. Um, and hit, so that money comes in specifically for mentorship. And there's a requirement through that, that you have to have a person that is a designated person, at least part-time temporary, to service that. So while we also are looking at paying teachers and buildings to support with some of that money, we have to have a person that is hired to do that. Makes sense?
So your part-time temporary would be paid by great.
Yes. I can't think so.
Think of any of the.
I, I don't know how many we have other than we have Mr. Simmons, the interventionist, but they're grant. And nobody we're paying out of pocket for that's not paid through some type of a grant. Like Jody's position, um, is contracted for cer- certain days, but she's paid out of a grant that has to be used, um, for testing. Yeah, which we were paying anyway. So we paid Jody to do the service personnel testing that we were paying South Branch to do. And we were paying them more, I think, than what we're paying now to do it in-house. So that saved, that saved us money. Um. Yes, that's right. Jake Simon, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's a good thing.
So it looks like that all of this, the negative one, that four, three point five, oh, combined.
You would think, wouldn't you? We worked really hard to get that number down last year.
Nine nine four and four nine four.
Well, the number is also going to change because of enrollment and stuff, which also affects it. So.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's our enrollment's down, yeah.
That we can't control.
No.
But according to this, we're like three and a half over.
When we ended, she talked about last year's.
Yeah.
Well, we tried to cut to, from what we did cut, yeah. We cut it down.
Where we were last year.
Yeah.
We've increased, yeah, by that amount.
So here we're talking positions.
So here you're looking at positions. Now, I did not have, so some of my numbers are not going to be accurate and I'll give you the right numbers to write in there because they actually sent this out. When did you forward it to me? Last evening at like six P M?
Yeah, it came out last night.
This is what they.
It's actually not even public yet.
Yeah, because the finance department hasn't sent it out.
They sent it to us to review first.
Where do we need to put it in our book in this tab?
They're talking about, she put it in.
Yeah, you can just mark through my numbers here. I'm just talking about my numbers there. Yeah. So when I did the numbers, I lumped together because the PSSP and the professional, I kind of lumped them together instead of pulling those out. So when I ran the numbers to start with, I had that four professional, we were over nine point nine six, six eight. But that included the folks that fall under the PSSP, which is the counselors and those folks. So we were getting funded for ten point six oh three positions there. So really that needs to be lumped together to show the true amount. Um, but off of the certified list, I'll give you those numbers. For professional, they have that we are over point seven four. So that would be a negative point seven four.
Where, where are you changing that?
Professional, this number right here under FY twenty-six.
The nine point nine six eight?
The nine point nine six eight, yes.
Should be what?
Should be negative point seven four.
Point seven?
Yes, negative point seven four. Right, just zero point seven four negatives. The service personnel that was negative nine point six six eight should be negative eight point seven zero.
And that was the hiring, seven more interventionists added.
They're eight, you cap it, not interventionists.
The funding for it the prior year.
We get funded for those. So when they give us those additionally, increase it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. For the service is eight, eight point seven zero negative, yeah.
So she's replacing, Sheena, you're replacing that column right here.
She's everyone, the service personnel breakdown.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And then for the PSSP, it would be two point six nine instead of the ten point six oh three. So my negative nine point zero three three at the bottom should really be negative six point seven five. And part of that is due to, I used the same numbers last year for the VOTAC and for charter schools and we did have a decrease what they deducted for us from the charter schools. So that's a large piece of that difference there.
Where am I making this change right here?
That's a question.
That's right. Yep.
The autism mentor was at Morefield High School. Peggy just texted me. Morefield High School, we had an individual move in in a wheelchair and he has the autism mentor.
I have two point six nine, negative.
Right.
Yes, and then if you come back over here. This amount, the negative nine nine three three is really negative six point seven five. Yep, and then there's four positions, um, that aren't recognized as state aid eligible. So the two Marcia's position as a psychometrist.
Psychometrist.
Um, is one of those. The two OTs that we hired are part of that four. And then, um, Tony's position.
TSS.
TSS. Um, make up those four. They're not state eligible, state eligible, so they do not count above.
Can't you, it's, should I please show you?
They don't fit in, they don't fit in a classification that gets funded on the list, essentially is what it is.
So we would be paying a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So really if you add them in.
Which you're over anyway, but.
Right, if you add them in, that's why I showed them over here, so we can account for them. The only two that I would maybe argue not accounting for are the OT positions because prior to that, we were paying, and I did a breakdown under other expenses at the very back, that gave you the amount that we were paying for best life practices.
For the contract.
That they haven't closed. So to me, yeah, you hired two, but you offset this expense over here. So whether they should really be considered over the amount that you were over.
Yeah, it's, it was expensive when we would contract their services.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
So really down below then, instead of my thirteen, my negative thirteen oh three three, it would really be negative ten point seven five. And last year, if you look at FY twenty-five there to get to, we were over ten point one two oh. Those four there were additional hires that we knew were, had happened right after October one. This year, we currently do not have anything, any positions over that hire, right?
That's not already.
It's not already.
Counted for somewhere.
Four. Yeah, I think we went through that and we did not have any positions. Like we had already hired after October first last year, four different positions. So the enrollment decreasing cost us, the little note I made at the bottom, four point three eight four positions. It always makes a difference.
From last year and this year?
From last year to this year, the enrollment, the decrease in enrollment cost us that. So just to give you guys, well, I have a couple. I didn't have all of these ready when I tried to get the notebooks done for you guys to have early, so you're gonna have some handouts that you can add into your notebook. I just wanted to give you guys an idea. So this is, this is last year's numbers because of course this year's hadn't been finalized or sent out. I took, um, and Orin helped me put this together with the, the counties that have excess levies and, and there's just some information here. So we took each county and what they were over or under last year. So their current funding for this year based off the numbers last year for professional personnel and service personnel and then ran a total in the far right column. Um, just to give you an idea of we still need to be watchful and pay attention to this, but we're, we're trying to do a good job and overall we're doing a very good job. Um, the counties that I highlighted, you're welcome, are counties that are very similar to us in enrollment.
Can I have one of those? That's okay.
I even changed the font because Warren loves to change the font. So the ones that are highlighted are counties that have excess levies. So the ones that are in bold over in the left column under county have excess levies. Um, the ones that I highlighted across are counties that are very similar to us in size. However, I did note there that Barber County is two hundred and sixteen less students enrolled than us, um, just to give you an idea. Um, but they were the ones that were within a few of us. Also, um.
And they don't have an excess levy.
They do not have an excess levy. They were the only one in similar size to us that didn't have an excess levy. That's why I noted out there. They're also the, the smallest of those.
Yeah, gotcha.
As well. Um, and I did clarify with the state, this does not include positions in those counties' excess levies. So any position that they ran in the excess levy that they hired with levy funds are not included in this overage. So when you see some of these large counties that are a hundred and sixty-eight folks over formula, that's not including what they have hired with school levy funds.
Well, most of them are negative five.
Most of them are way.
So all these are over?
All of those are over by those numbers.
Like Marion's paying for a hundred and ten positions.
Yeah. So, I mean, we definitely need to take this serious. I just wanted to kind of give you guys an understanding that we're operating with care. I mean, we're really trying, we're really trying to stay close to formula.
Yeah.
I just don't know at this point how much closer you can get.
How could some, unlike Westfield County, be operating though they're two hundred and six?
Well, Westfield County has gas and oil funding. They have extra, I mean, they're one of the counties that's a little, a bit wealthier than us.
Negative.
Meaning it's not funded.
Meaning it's over, yeah. Those are not funded.
That's what it means. Negative means they're not funded.
Okay. Do you, how, how much is this costing us? The number of, the over.
I mean, it's gonna change for service and professional. Um, and, and this is what our, this is what our certified list showed last year.
That we were to the.
Um, and of course, you have to account for those positions that we didn't have on there. So this actually shows that last year we were three point eight nine under. So according to this, when the, when the certified list was done, we had not, we had no positions over. However, four of those positions were, did not state aid eligible. We hired four additional positions after October one and this also included six funding positions for third grade aides, even though they haven't been implemented yet because it's a year behind, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So that, that takes it, that takes it to the negative ten.
So when we get back to coding those positions, you mean there's nothing else that we could code those, that we could get reimbursed for?
They are what they are.
Well, it wouldn't matter because.
We're over anyway.
We're over anyway. And the way, the way the formula is now, I think before I started several years ago, you only got funded on the position grad. Now you get funded for the positions they say you're eligible to have based on enrollment. So it wouldn't matter. Like even if we were getting, if we were supposed to get funded for two hundred positions and we only had a hundred and eighty people employed, we would still get funded for two hundred positions. So they don't take away from you anymore. You're gonna get, you're gonna get what you should get, whether those folks are included as state aid eligible or not. I just put them on here so you know above and beyond what shows on the certified list, we are paying out of county for these four positions that don't show up here because they don't consider them state eligible. I'm just trying to be transparent so you understand that there's still those as well. There are, um, there's my position that's required to be paid out of county. Um, part of Warren's position because attendance is required that you have to have, it has to be paid out of county. So we've never kind of been given those.
I think, um, transportation.
Rotation has to be paid out of that too.
Transportation has to be paid out of county too.
And those would be all of them.
Yeah. Well, you could look at your salaries that are back here, I guess.
Yes, you can do that.
Which we'll get to. Yeah, we have that there. And we do have some thoughts, um, moving into next year as far as changing some personnel things that would cut a couple of positions too at this point. Um, I won't, we, if we're gonna talk specifics, we'd have to go into executive session later on, but we have some thoughts.
Yeah, so looking at that at ten point seven five, um, I really think it's hard to include the two OT folks just because their salaries replaced the contracted expense over there. Um, I mean, I would, I would think that. I mean, I would, I would view that more as eight point seven five because you, you're actually saving by putting them on certified list even though it makes, makes it look like you're over. Um, the kicker though is gonna be the funding for the CIS is running out. It starts decreasing, so this is gonna be the first year that we end up paying a small portion of that. But come this following year, we're only gonna be able to cover three of those six salaries. So you can add those, in theory, those three would be added to the amount that we're over.
Gone.
It was September thirtieth of twenty four. So I would view that more, if you take the two off that we've replaced, add the three that won't be covered next year for CIS, that we would be like eleven point seven five. If you wanted the true value of what, what we're over. If that makes sense.
We give a, a portion of positions to the charter schools and we give a portion of positions to South Ranch. Right? I saw the charter school here is one point, and South Ranch is two point one one.
Yeah, and that's what I based on last year, and they changed some of these.
It's a little more, I think. Thanks. Sixteen kids, yeah.
Yeah, what was charter election, eighteen?
Yeah, we're sixteen kids now, yeah. And we give two point one nine, you said, two point one nine to South Ranch? Yeah, two point one nine, it was two point one one.
I think I flipped that. I was thinking it was two point nine. I flipped that in my head.
It's still up a little bit.
It's up a little bit.
Yeah, a little bit. There's three. Well, they've requested a third of a position for us to fund additionally too. Um, I don't think we can support.
They made this really complicated because they add, they take out the charter schools, then they add them back in. But you'll see our enrollment was the two thousand, the third column over STE enrollment was the two thousand one hundred thirty-eight point fifty-seven. So we lost thirty-two students, um, from last year to this year in the funding. So on the second page, at the very end of that, you'll see the number of employed in excess. That's professional. Oh, the negative zero point seven four. That's where I'll be going. That number, um. On the next page after that is the service personnel. You'll see the excess in the far right column of negative eight point seven zero. And then on the very last sheet is the, um, professional student support personnel. And you'll see, we're actually under there of the two point six nine.
Probably before we go any further, we need to take a break and do lunch. That's okay.
Let's open that.
Network. And I think we just need to pause for lunch, is that right? We don't actually take a vote on that, right? I'm being, no, no, I'm asking for real. Is that right? Okay.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Hold on. I go on the back. All right, ready? It's all you.
It's all me.
Where are we?
That's a good question.
Abby.
We are, I'm still in.
Tap eight?
I'm still in.
They're tap seven, yep.
Sorry. Good job, me. The last piece I just have there is enrollment, so that'll be a quick. And you guys probably don't have it, because I need to pass that piece out. Here just gives you a glimpse of the enrollment for the last couple of years, so we usually just take a quick look at that.
It's still under tips, that looks.
Yep. I usually put that into certified lists, just for the certified lists as base on enrollment. That also has behind it, in past years, I've given you several years, so you have that in other binders if you want to look at it. But behind there is the last two years, sometimes you guys like to look by school, maybe by grade. So those would be behind there.
Studied before, the last two years.
Pretty studied before, so the last 10 years, it's 267 total. Now, some of those are going to be homeschool. I think you could probably say some of those that we lost have gone homeschool. I wouldn't think all the homeschool kids are just new kids that never entered our system, just because of that increase. But I have that here too.
Some of those, homeschool is different than COVID this day, because homeschool, you go right into homeschool. So until.
March 2nd?
Yeah, so March 7th up until this point, it's been a 45-day, part of the pursuit after COVID, covering 45 days. We're transitioning, but then.
So everybody that's already homeschool can get HOPE scholarship money, which will be $100 million out of the education budget if everybody goes, right? It's what they told us at my meeting on Monday. And I don't know where that money is going to come from.
Next round.
Oh.
We're going to have a bunch of.
They washed out.
Not as well educated.
Yeah, yeah, yes, correct, in a lot of instances. And I always preface when I talk about that by saying, I know some homeschool families who do a phenomenal job, that are amazing. That I would give, you know, higher in a heartbeat to teach our kids. But there are, for every one of those, there are 10 that are not doing a good job, unfortunately, for the kids' sake.
For the main school students to tell.
Yes.
How they want to be.
Well, and to receive the HOPE scholarship, you do not have to have, and to educate your child through the HOPE scholarship, you do not have to have a high school diploma?
Not technically, because you're not, you're not the one.
Educating them.
Signing up to be the educator for the HOPE student. The high school diploma acts as, this is the person that's going to provide the construction for HOPE scholarship. By way of example, I'm sorry, I don't mean to take some time here, but HOPE scholarship, for example, that here, living in order in county two, is that we can have students that are here, well, folks that are living here in Hardy County, but going to a Montessori school in Chester, for example. And that's our tax dollars.
Paying out of state.
That are paying to go out of state for a child who's either a regurgitation.
Yep.
And it's constantly expanding, and you see with these numbers too, they'll see how exponentially higher it's getting.
And that can be an online program that they purchase for their kids too. So you could be educating your kid at home without a high school diploma, putting them on an online program, and calling it school, and getting money to pay for it.
I saw a report last year, I forget how many, I can't remember the number off the top of my head now, but it was several million dollars of West Virginia HOPE scholarship funds went to California.
Yeah.
It was a virtual platform, based out of cash, I'd say like 3 million or something, which is just crazy to think.
We're sending our money to California.
Right. And every time I have to verify a vendor, because we're using taxpayers' dollars, and they want to make sure they're registered or not particular, but then you're giving the HOPE scholarship out to just go there to California.
Monday, the legislators.
Choke nats and swallow a camel.
I know.
The legislators that were at my meeting on Monday actually asked the question and said, we heard that some of this money might not be being spent in the state, is that true?
Duh.
Yeah, yeah, you gave it to them, and they can spend it towards educational. Also, I don't know if you saw Nancy White, who's on the, who was a treasurer, who's on the State Board of Education, I believe she's still currently active on the state board.
Yeah, she actually comes to all of our meetings, she came, she was at Canane all week.
She wrote a great article about how some of the things that HOPE scholarship money was being spent on, and it was like horseback riding lessons, scooters, trips to go hiking. Like, you can spend it on excursions or events that are educational from that perspective. And I'm not saying those things are bad things, but I don't think that educational dollars meant to educate students should be spent on those types of things.
Yeah.
I mean, can we buy a horse and do horseback riding lessons out back?
I mean, maybe, because we're part of the wheel.
Part of the wheel, I know, part in the wheel. Oh, Lord.
And then there's just a lot of issues with it, like she said, you know, there's some that do a very good job, and then one of the principals said, was that yesterday, no, I mean, when we had the principal's meeting?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, that he had a student that came back from doing that, and of course, they weren't on an online platform.
Yeah.
But it come back and she's.
No, they were, they were at the church.
Yeah, it wasn't online.
Yeah, it wasn't online, right.
It wasn't one of the virtual online.
Micro school for the church.
The local ones, a middle schooler that was getting worksheets of like 7 minus 6.
And said she couldn't do anything.
Said that she didn't learn.
And she told him she didn't do anything last year.
She didn't learn a single thing last year. And we don't.
So you have that.
We don't see, I don't see the curriculum that they're doing. I get, there are a couple of different ways that we, that we get the progress determinations year to year, and then that third bit, eighth and 11th grade assessments. But year to year, it's either commonly a portfolio review, where they're just compiling assignments that they did every year, getting a certified teacher to sign off, to say, yeah, the student made progress, even though that certified teacher's not the one doing the.
Teaching.
Educating day to day, or they do a nationally normalized standard assessment test, which, there's one that's becoming more common that we're seeing out of Iowa, it's an Iowa.
Yeah, Iowa student assessment, yep.
Iowa assessment, and even that, it's, we're seeing a lot of issues. So it's frustrating from that aspect too, is that that's all that's required in order, and HOPE is a little bit different, because they can remove eligibility by way of funding, but homeschool students, there's not.
Nothing.
So the homeschool numbers that I've given you guys in the past, I made a copy out of the last packet. In 2018, there was 68, 2019, there was 92. 2020, there was.
Hold on. Hold on, I go on the back. All right, ready? It's all you.
It's all me.
Where are we?
That's a good question. We are, I'm still in.
Tap eight?
I'm still in.
They're tap seven, yep.
Good job, me. The last piece I just have there is enrollment, so that'll be a quick. And you guys probably don't have it because I need to pass that piece out. Here just gives you a glimpse of the enrollment for the last couple of years, so we usually just take a quick look at that.
This is still under tips, that looks.
Yep. I usually put that into certified list, just from the certified list, this is based on enrollment. That also has behind it, in past years, I've given you several years, so you have that in other binders if you want to look at it. But behind there is the last two years, sometimes you guys like to look by school, maybe by grade. So those would be behind there. Pretty studied defined, so the last 10 years, it's 267 total. Now, some of those are going to be homeschool. You could probably say some of those that we lost have gone homeschool. I wouldn't think all the homeschool kids are just new kids that never entered our system just because of that increase. But I have that here too.
Some of those, homeschool is different than HOPE at this stage, because homeschool, you go right into homeschool. Hope until.
March 2nd?
So March 7th up until this point, it's been a 45 day, part of the pursuit has been covered for 45 days.
So everybody that's already homeschool can get HOPE scholarship money, which will be $100 million out of the education budget if everybody goes, right? That's what they told us at my meeting a month ago. And I don't know where that money is going to come from. Yeah, yeah, yes, correct, in a lot of instances. And I always preface when I talk about that by saying, I know some homeschool families who do a phenomenal job, that are amazing. That I would give, you know, hire in a heartbeat to teach our kids. But there are, for every one of those, there are 10 that are not doing a good job, unfortunately, for the kids' sake. Yes. Well, and to receive the HOPE scholarship, you do not have to have, and to educate your child through the HOPE scholarship, you do not have to have a high school diploma?
Not technically, because you're not, you're not the one.
Educating them.
Signing up to be the educator for the HOPE student. The high school diploma acts as this is the person that's going to provide the construction for HOPE scholarship. By way of example, I'm sorry, I don't mean to take some time here, but HOPE scholarship, for example, that here living in order in county two, that we can have students that are here, well, folks that are living here in Hardy County, but going to a Montessori school in Chester, for example, and that's our tax dollars.
Paying out of state.
Paying to go out of state for child, for student registration.
Yep.
And it's constantly expanding, and you see with these numbers too, they'll see how exponentially higher it's getting.
And that can be an online program that they purchase for their kids too, so you could be educating your kid at home without a high school diploma, putting them on an online program and calling it school and getting money to pay for it.
I saw a report last year, I forget how many, I can't remember the number off the top of my head now, but it was several million dollars of West Virginia HOPE scholarship funds went to California.
Yeah.
It was a virtual platform based out of checks, I would say like 3 million or something, which is just crazy to think.
We're sending our money to California.
Right. And every time I have to verify a vendor because we're using taxpayers' dollars and they want to make sure they're registered or what particular, but then you're giving the HOPE scholarship out to just go there to California.
Monday, the legislators.
I know.
The legislators that were at my meeting on Monday actually asked the question and said, we heard that some of this money might not be being spent in the state, is that true?
Duh.
Yeah, yeah, you gave it to them and they can spend it towards educational. Also, I don't know if you saw Nancy White, who's on the, who was a treasurer, who's on the State Board of Education, I believe she's still currently active on the state board.
Yeah, she actually comes to all of our meetings. She came, she was at Canane all week.
She wrote a great article about how some of the things that HOPE scholarship money was being spent on, and it was like horseback riding lessons, scooters, trips to go hiking, like you can spend it on excursions or events that are educational from that perspective, and I'm not saying those things are bad things, but I don't think that educational dollars meant to educate students should be spent on those types of things.
Yeah.
I mean, can we buy a horse and do horseback riding lessons out back?
I mean, maybe could be part of the wheel.
Part of the wheel, I know, put in the wheel. Oh, Lord.
And then there's just a lot of, like, like she said, you know, there's some, there's some that do a very good job, and then one of the principals said, was that yesterday, no, I mean, when was the principal's meeting?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, but he had a student that came back from doing that, and of course, they weren't on an online platform.
Yeah.
But it come back and she's.
No, they were, they were at the church.
Yeah, it wasn't online.
Yeah, it wasn't online, right.
It wasn't one of the virtual online, it was one of the local, the local ones. A middle schooler that was getting worksheets of like 7 minus 6.
And said she couldn't do anything.
Said that she didn't learn.
And she told him she didn't do anything last year.
Single last year. So you have that.
We don't see, I don't see the curriculum that they're doing. I get, there are a couple of different ways that we, that we get the progress determinations year to year, and then that where the eighth and 11th grade assessments. But year to year, it's either commonly a portfolio review, where they're just compiling assignments that they did every year, getting a certified teacher to sign off, to say, yeah, the student made progress, even though that certified teacher's not the one doing the teaching, educating day to day, or they do a nationally normalized standard assessment test, which there's, there's one that's becoming more common that we're seeing out of Iowa, it's an Iowa.
Iowa student assessment, yep.
Iowa assessment. And even, even that, it's, it's, we're seeing a lot of issues. So it's, it's frustrating from that aspect too, is that that's all that's required in order, and HOPE is a little bit different because they can remove eligibility by way of funding, but homeschool students, there's, there's not.
So the homeschool numbers that I've given you guys in the past, I made a copy out of the last packet. In 2018, there was 68, 2019, there was 92. 2020, there was 113, and then Orin gave us one of the ones that are listed as homeschool, so you can see at the bottom of those two, the second page was for 24, what was submitted was 208. And then for 25, what was submitted was 193, so it actually went down some. And then currently, for this school year, the active students as of 11/18 for homeschool was 198.
So it has gone down a little bit.
Yeah.
But I do think that some of those that have gone down are.
HOPE scholarships.
Transitioning to HOPE, because they like, they're two separate systems that they're kept in, and a lot of time, well, not a lot of times, but I can think of several instances just off the top of my head where it's already been a homeschool student.
And you see there's.
That is transitioning to those.
Got it, got it.
And our numbers have increased, you know, we've talked about that in the past, the homeschool number. Now, you're also going to be fighting HOPE, but you know, that probably, the increase in homeschool probably obviously coincides with our decrease in enrollment to a certain certain degree. The other handout was the HOPE scholarship reports. This shows that in '23, we had one student reported. In '24, we had three students, and in '25, we had 18. And Orin gave me the number for this current year, active as of 11/18/25 was 31. Currently, none of those students are coming into the schools for anything?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so, I thought we talked about that.
Had some reach out, and that's something that we'll have to, we have the policy now in place to, you know, for those purposes, but need to get on the agenda, future agenda for the determination of the amounts that are going to be charged. Because that is one good thing, is that if you have HOPE students that want to come take a class, want to participate in extracurricular, you can charge them for that. That was the policy for all of the years, and now it's just coming down to what to charge them for those, those classes.
Anyone have any more questions about that or discussion?
I don't know what the.
Me to pass these out first?
How to attract students back to the public schools.
Well, we have over 100 kids in virtual, so I really think that has saved us for kids, for families who just want their kids to not be coming in the building, whether it's attendance or because they'll get out of bed on a holiday or party, whatever the reasons are, virtual will pass help us with that in. Because I mean, otherwise, you're, that might get you in stuff somewhere. Otherwise, you're looking at another hundred and some kids that probably won't be homeschooling or in a different way. Ah, good. Does she have a pile somewhere?
Sorry, you guys are getting so many handouts. I tried to have those notebooks done early, so I didn't have all of the pieces completed. So I didn't have the coaches all tallied up and put together when I did section eight. I don't know how detailed you guys want to look at that, or which, which portion you want to start with, but the top piece that Gina handed out for me was the salary schedule for coaches, athletic directors, and trainers. So that just gives you an idea for each position, what the pay is. Now, these in theory, I guess, you talked earlier about what part-time, someone asked a question about what part-time people are included. I mean, if you want to consider.
Are they considered extracurricular positions?
Really, they'd be extracurricular, yeah, probably, instead of part-time, just thinking they're not full-time people.
Part-time temporary is usually based on other days, right, several days.
These are all paid out of general funds. When you're looking at extra. That's where this comes from.
She did a blue and golden green, that's funny.
And if you want a further breakdown, here's Morefield High School. Remember, it's front and back, so East Hardy High School, Morefield Middle School, and East Hardy Middle School. These are all out of general, yeah, we're talking about people in extra. It would be extracurricular contracts, but yeah, these are, these are additional out of general funds. And I did ask around not too long ago for other counties, I don't know if we shared.
Did we just look at that? Did we give it, yeah, I think we gave, I think we gave it to them.
I was actually kind of surprised that we were lower.
I think. I don't know, was I going to look at, where's varsity?
Anyone have any questions or discussion?
Versus, where's head, head softball? I'm looking at it, head softball. Varsity softball, okay, we did make that the same, okay, I was worried that was a difference. Okay.
Following after that is the administrative salaries for fiscal year 2026. Out of the general fund or out of this, you just want everybody that's paid out of Fund 11?
That the state's not funding, I think he means like the.
That the state, yeah, funding. That would be my position. Josh's position. His full position.
And a portion of Orin's.
Portion of Orin and a portion of Emily, well, and Emily's position, child nutrition is not. Her whole position, yeah.
Is that the other one that's not?
A portion of them.
No, her whole position. So depending upon enrollments, you're required by the state to have a fitness director. So we're required to have half of a fitness director at least. So that's the part of the salary that's out there, the full salary, which I don't know why, is required by state. The position is required, and it's not allowed to be paid for by any funding, even though they're requiring it, so it seems odd to me that you require positions and then provide zero funding for those required positions. But anyway, it's the state.
Well, and who else's is paid out of other things, like we have Jessica's is paid out of technology, a portion of it out of technology, right? Is Tony's also?
Only 200 days if you pay by the county, I mean, by the state.
For those that are, for those that are picked up, yeah, the state only pays for the, for professionals, service, they pay it more.
And they only pay off the state average.
Right.
Also, so it's not like you're getting full reimbursement for what you're paying a person.
Right, every person's paid on that same average, right?
If you have all teachers that are one year in, then you're probably making some money off of the state aid formula. You have all teachers that are 30 years in, then you're, you're for sure losing money on the state aid formula.
But what I was saying as far as the, like with Jessica, technology, we can take the full amount that, out of her, of her salary, correct, out of.
We're not taking the full amount because part of her CTE.
But the technology piece that we're paying comes out of the technology fund, so that's not technically general fund, I guess is what I was getting at. So not everybody else is coming out of.
Sorry, I thought you meant her whole.
No, that's okay, and then Tony's as well, we pay out of.
All of Tony's is paid out of.
So while he doesn't fit on the certified list, his salary's paid out of technology. Jennifer's, a portion's paid out of federal programs. So that portion comes out of federal programs monies. Is there anybody else there, Beth? We paying hers out of, nothing comes out of special ed funding, okay. Nothing, if Emily's comes out of anything, nothing's, nothing of Josh comes out of transportation. Right?
Yeah, I mean, he's just in.
I was just making sure.
Coming source for, yeah.
And the state, only a possibility.
Yep.
Yep.
Average salary.
And we know that all these professionals on the next page, that they're not eligible for anything.
Out of the speech.
Well, now, that's a little different, because we get, we get, we get, not a lot, I'd have
Medicaid.
We get Medicaid for the speech pathologist. And the OTs we do as well, yes. But they still all show on our certified list. So they're all included in those numbers as far as over, under.
Are they pretty good about doing their billing?
Couldn't tell you about that.
I think speech pathologists are, I think they turn everything in the way they, the billing's actually done, they do their paperwork, but the billing's actually done by
we pay Epic.
Epic to do the billing.
And how about the OTs?
I think those folks are, yes.
The pathologist would also be on that list, on Medicaid.
Okay.
And they fall under that other category for not professional, not service, but the PS.
Yeah.
PSSB, thank you.
So Medicaid, is it paid up like it should be, or is it maybe a highway?
Uh, it's a little bit behind. But it's so, such small amounts, I don't, I think we just got I don't know what the last quarter was, it was something in 2023, I think, but it was like $4,000 and something for the quarter, so.
Not much at all.
Next sheet is service personnel in the office, they.
So the percentage of increases that you were getting in some offices, some people are still getting those?
We have a few.
For service? That's just service, right?
It looks like Pam would be the only one that's left on that list, well, and you're right.
I'm good, I'm waking you up, Janet. I don't think the. I think it's only service that gets the percentages, right?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, okay, yeah, not professional.
Yeah, no, no professional gets the percentage.
Caps, yeah, right. I'm wondering if we could contract this. I think we could, is it funny? Principals are 240, yeah, 240.
Assistant?
Yes.
That's right, this should be on here.
As I said, we have that somewhere.
Yeah, we do not have that.
We don't have principals in here. Oops. She's listening.
She's listening?
She was texting me earlier, we'd ask her to email it to me.
Yeah.
And then we can go over it.
I thought she just forgot, because I didn't even look at it, I just whole punched it and put it in there.
And assistants?
Yeah, we usually have those.
Okay, got it. I'll have her email it to me. Yes, we'll make sure you have a printed copy to have in your book. Can we go into executive session? To discuss a specific salary, can we go into executive session?
All those favorites have been done the same time. Hey, we're in an executive session at 12:37.
I think that's it.
But all-
Counselors are two ten. Yes, um, so are, ours occupational therapist is two ten because they do summer evaluations. Ashley Riegelman, I think is two ten with summer evaluation. Maybe speech or one speech or two. There might be some of the speech pathologist there too. I want to say there. Occupational therapies, two ten. Just, okay, just the occupational therapist is two ten and Ashley's two ten then. Yeah, I think that's it. All right. Are we down the levy?
Yeah, this is my expense section.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm gonna run to the restroom really quickly.
So the first sheet there is, um, the SBA project that we're currently, currently in the middle of. So the, uh, HVAC and roof at Morefield Middle School. And this was just to give you an idea, and really that shouldn't say F five twenty-six at the top, it should say F five twenty-four, uh, because this was all the expenditures as of the end of the year. So as of June thirtieth, the total drawdown for funds was one point three million. The portion that we paid out of that was eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and seven cents. So if you're, we had five hundred thousand was our match. So the difference between five hundred thousand and the eighty-nine, eighty-nine thousand, eight oh, or three ninety would be what we still, not what we owe now, because we've now paid since then, but as of June thirtieth, that would have been what we still had remaining to pay. The page behind that just shows that five hundred thousand county board funds and the amount of five hundred thousand. And I don't know where we ended up. There is a ratio that they use. So if it didn't cost, what we were approved, the six million, two hundred and fifty-seven, if it didn't cost that much, then the ratio kicks in, our percent of funds versus their percent of funds. So it could potentially be a little bit less than five hundred thousand. I'm not sure where that project ended up.
We were still a little bit over a million dollars left over when we decided to go ahead and replace all the ceiling tiles. Are you talking about Morefield Middle? Yes. All the ceiling tiles throughout Morefield Middle. So is, when you have money left over out of what they granted you, you can use it as long as it's towards the same type of project. And we, the last time you were in there, you probably noticed the whole cafeteria in the hallway had brand new ceiling tiles, which looked very clean and bright. And they were able to then, if we wanted to use some of that million dollars to go ahead into replacing, um, the classroom ceiling tiles, they were going to get matching and go ahead and start going through and doing some of that. So that was the last conversation we had about spending the money.
So essentially it won't, we won't have to make the full five hundred thousand dollar match, but until that project is complete, we won't know where our, our total ended up being.
Um, in the next couple of weeks, they commissioned everything. They had it up and running and, um, they're just wrapping up the final, final pieces, yeah. It's safe. Sir.
I was just gonna make a note here. When that is complete, I'll get you-
Smithini boys have their mom's quick reflexes. I'll tell Brandon that next time I see him.
It was in the news.
It was in the news. Let us assume comes from mom.
When that's complete, Melvin, you just want to know where our, you know, final, that's true, amount, scortion ended up being. If you flip to the next page, that shows this project has not started and our, um, portion of it was a hundred thousand. So Roy, you can look at that fund balance. And then when you start accounting for this stuff, now hopefully this does save us even doing that project at Morefield Middle School. I mean, ultimately you hope that you're saving in repairs and maintenance on that stuff that you would have been paying over the next couple of years. Um, you know, so there's some savings, I think, that will be reflected in there as well, but a fund balance can be eaten away pretty quickly. Um, and then here's the, if you want to, I didn't whole punch this. But here's the third SBA project, um, that she and Josh represented on, and I think it was ours fifty thousand.
Uh huh.
Our, um, now we don't know if we have received it or not, but our, if, if we would happen to be granted this project, our portion would be fifty thousand.
We, um, did get a call asking us to remove, I think if you look at that, you'll see on the last page, close to the end, the financial summary, it's the second from last page. Uh, it had the total project cost is four forty-six, um, and some change. That included some design fees, uh, that were tacked on by the designers that helped us present the project or helped us submit the project. But they contacted us, SBA did, and said, can you remove those? I think it was like seventy-five thousand dollars worth. It brought it down to, to just under four hundred thousand. Um, I think it was, I think it was three seventy-six, if I remember correctly, is our new number that we were requesting total. Because when you're doing just a flooring in an elevator, you don't need design fees. You just put the flooring in and put the elevator in. So that's just typical that submissions have those included. So they asked us to take that out and submit a new, a new number, which is a really promising thing because that leads you to believe that they're considering you and probably going to approve it. But we should know, I think it's December.
It's December.
Third or fifth.
I was gonna say twelfth, but I don't know why.
I think it was the thirteenth last year, but I think it's the third or fourth this year.
Yeah.
Um, I tried to schedule something for the fourth.
You have a, there's a meeting after school.
Oh, it's the, yeah, it's the, okay, it's what I need to talk to them about, but the, the principals want to meet with the board. They want a roundtable with you guys, just to sit around the table. So that they can talk to you about what they see in their schools as current issues, just like a, everybody all at once, not the one-on-one presentation, but they want to sit with you at the table and just share. Yeah, and they asked if they could do it, um, sooner rather than later, so that when you guys were making decisions, you had an idea of what they're dealing with directly. And I told them that I would see today, if you guys were free, December the fourth, for what day of the week that is, but for maybe like a-
It's a Monday because it's the board-
Thursday and then-
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
December one is a Monday.
Yeah, I think it's a Thursday.
Yeah, so it'd be, be similar for-
Yeah, yeah, it's a Thursday, um, at like nine in the morning for a couple of hours. They just wanted to see if you guys could sit with them and, they just want to talk to you.
And they want a December four.
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to be on record, these December meetings and this late November meetings, just don't work for me.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you get past, but November fifteenth.
Farming's getting it.
This week is really bad. I shouldn't be here. I'm here because I'm supposed to be, but I just, you know, FYI, if you have this the same time next year, I probably won't be.
Okay.
Just too much going on.
Okay, we can look at that when we schedule next year for sure, but, um, that was their requested date. And I know that's a special day, but they- if you have a different date that you want to look at, we can, I can take something else back to them, but that was the date they all decided they were available. So they, they wanted it done before, I, I really think they wanted it done primarily before personnel season enters because they're very worried about who, who they're gonna lose and, and they don't feel at this point they can have anything else stripped. So I told them I would see what you guys had going on.
I think we're gonna hear about, um, the loss of the block schedule at the high school.
I don't think you will.
You don't?
That was-
I don't think so. I don't think administration is having issues with that.
Okay.
I think they're, they're working really hard to make it work and have done some things like to, to support keeping it the way it is. And I think they understand. I think the, the impacts of the loss of that, meaning we took three teachers, that's the part I think they're worried about, just the loss of, of personnel, because now they have to add personal finance and computer science, their two new state requirements, and they don't have people to teach that. So I know that's a concern at the high school level, but I don't think you'll hear anything more.
Okay.
Yeah. I could be wrong, but I really don't think so. They have it with me anyway, I guess I should say.
So the principals want to meet at nine AM on December four.
Yeah, that's their date that they, they had available.
Um, the country roads leasing, um, for the, uh, ESG project. Just as a reminder that that payment will start December first of twenty twenty-six. So I'll just put that in here with future expenses.
I did ask the, um, if they would be able to update it on the savings, Melvin, I think you had asked if they could update on savings. Um, how frequently? She said that, um, normally we get, I'll wait till they're done and then I'll tell everybody. They, you all had asked about the updates on the savings we were experiencing through the ESG project. And she said that the, she originally said that the contract, of course, includes the once annually for three years. And I said, well, they would like it more frequently. And she said, I talked to the boss and he said, we can provide a, provide quarterly reports. It will not be formal like to the annual report, but we can give updates. And then she said, just remind, then it will take a little time for the utilities to catch up once the energy conservation measures are installed, because these utilities like behind someone getting the bills. That's what I would, for sure. Thank you. Um, and then she said, to remind you that Jeff Alred is starting the lighting this week to get the savings started as soon as possible. So they've already started at East Tardy replacing all the lights. So we should see some changes frequently, but they already started. Yeah, they're East Tardy.
Elementary?
Um, they're starting at East Tardy Elementary and then going to East Tardy High School and then moving to the, uh, Morefield side of the county. And they're working in the evenings. They're going in at like three thirty and working all evening long, so.
The next piece I have is just a technology update. Um, they recently submitted a COPS grant for security cameras at, uh, Morefield Elementary School, Morefield Intermediate School and the Launchpad. Um, they did not, they were not awarded that grant, um, but Jessica said that they were going to try again. But at some point moving forward, um, they will need, or we will need security cameras at MBS, MIS and the Launchpad. Um, display units have approximately, those are the ones we brought, we bought through COVID funding for the classrooms that were compatible with the, the devices, with the Apple devices. Um, they have approximately four months of warrants remaining.
Display units?
Like the boards.
Just like the smart board type things? Okay, okay, okay. All right.
Um, the one-to-one devices, um, Jessica said have, um, approximately two years of life remaining. Currently they are updating central office computers. All devices are at the end of life and have stopped updating. So they can no longer get like the protection.
Yeah.
That's not good.
The security pieces.
Yeah, the security pieces and stuff like that. Um, they just spent fifty-four thousand of technology funds to update cameras, um, at, I think Morefield High School was one of them, Morefield Middle School.
And East Tardy?
Maybe East Tardy. Um, it's still the old cameras, but a new system. Um, they record twenty-four seven and so for, so far, they said that they have, have no recorded problems.
Yeah, they said they're much better.
They said there was an outage or something like where one glitched or something, but otherwise, yeah, that was due to just the power went out. Um, but she said otherwise they have not had any reported problems with the new system. They need additional security filters. They have applied for a grant for that, but they have not yet heard.
Now what's left?
The results. Security filters, I, I believe that's like our students using the devices, so it filters.
Mm-hmm. It filters their access, so they can't access anything they shouldn't be, and it also protects against malware or any type of phishing scams, that kind of thing.
How much, what's the, what's the dollar amount?
I don't know what that grant was she applied for.
It's imperative that- It's imperative that we have that.
Yeah, we, we currently do have it, these are additional because I think when, if a kid brings their, their personal computer to school to use, like for college classes, we're supposed to have them on a separate network. And so I think we had got, gone away from guest networks and putting everybody on our other one, so I think this is an additional thing that will be on the, the network itself that will filter devices that are, do not belong to us, if that makes sense, am I right about that? Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's right, I think that's, I'm describing that correctly.
Um, so why wouldn't we allow them to bring their computer for their college classes? Why wouldn't we make them just use their iPad?
Well, the college, there's something to do with the windows that you can have open at a time for the college classes, and some of the college classes through Eastern require them to be doing multiple things on different windows, and you can't do that on an iPad. That's been the primary complaint, there's, there's a way around it, but it's very convoluted and difficult. And then we've also just had complaints of, you know, the keyboards for the iPads are really small, so you get some of those big guys that are trying to type, you know, essays and things.
Okay.
It's just, they have their own at home, which in the past hasn't been an issue.
Yeah.
But we used to have a guest network, and we stopped with the guest network, so now it's like the only way to get them on the internet is to put them on our network. And because we don't own the devices, we want to make sure there's nothing on that device that's gonna attack us.
Yeah, well, it sounds like we need a guest network again.
Yeah, and I think that piece is a whole other problem, so we might just be better off to do the filtering, it has to be, that once they get on our network, it would protect us, yeah. I think that was the cheaper, safer option from what I could guess from the conversations, yeah.
Okay.
The next page after that is the, um, costs for the current year for our virtual platform. I think that's just gonna be every year, unless something major changes, providing a virtual option is probably gonna be what we do going forward. Um, so sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for this current year.
And how many students do we have enrolled?
I want to say around one-ten to one-twenty, it varies from semester to semester, but, um, go ahead, Melvin.
The quantity there says eight sixty, what?
Well, some of
It's by month, is what this is.
It is.
Seventy-nine dollars is by month, so, but I don't know what the eight sixty is either.
It's, it's multiplying the number of students.
Times kids, times eight months, maybe.
That's what it's doing.
Maybe, yeah, that's a weird, I guess for the whole annual fee, yeah. We're taking them in and out per month to help save us money, because we're only paying for them when they're actually there. But just to add that, when you said we probably would keep, the state code requires we have a virtual program. So we, the other options would be hiring people to do it, and you're not gonna get a person for that, plus the, you know, curriculum for a hundred and some kids. We do pay Stephanie Simmons to, as a coordinator for that. Um, and she would be, that, that's an extra duty contract too, but she does a great job managing and doing the grades and communicating with the parents and of all of those kids.
So that'll, yeah, be a continuing expense that will probably go up, especially if they know we have to provide it.
Yeah. Yep, they tend to do that, don't they?
Um, the next one is just, and we looked at that at one of the board meetings, that was the clips we got for dental and vision going back out on it, they gave us their best the second, third, to the best. Here were the, uh, the costs, the total cost for twenty twenty-four. Well, would have been school year twenty-five, but, and then behind it is for this, this current year, starting November one, because that's when we enrolled into the, the dental and vision. As you can see, the, um, vision ended up staying the same, and then the dental increased by two dollars and ninety-nine cents. So I did an estimate on that, we had two hundred and eighty-eighty, two hundred and eighty-eight employees enrolled, um, at two, two dollars and ninety-nine cents was eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and twelve cents, times twelve months, that increased approximately, assuming two hundred and eighty-eight continue to stay enrolled for the year, cost us ten thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. So that's what the increase, because of course, we don't pay for any additional, like spouse, children. So when you see the total cost that we do send in, it's gonna include what we withheld from those folks on their paycheck to pay for children or spouse if they have them covered, but just paying our, our piece, which is just the employees, that was the increase that we will, we will realize.
Do the employees seem to appreciate that?
I think, I've heard a lot about the dental.
According to the principals yesterday, they asked about it, and they were concerned they would be losing it, that they, that they like it, and that they're all using it from what they're hearing from their staff. I personally use it, do you use it?
Yeah.
It does save, it saves you a lot of out-of-pocket money when you go to the dentist, I mean, it does, or optometrist, either one. Do they make you wait, they, they have to wait till a completed cycle, is that January though?
It was, no, it's not, it's just one of the ones that I just didn't get copied and put in there, but it's currently two hundred and eighty-eight participants in dental. Two eighty-six, no, but I can get that, and two eighty-six people participated in it. Yeah, where I gave it to you for a year, let's see if I can get that.
But that's just people, so if you had five kids that didn't complete you, and five kids, I can have six, it would be six.
Yeah, well, that, that would just be counting employees that are utilizing it, right? Each, each of those two eighty-eights is an employee, so it's not, I guess what they're asking, that's not counting if I have five kids using it or all that, it's just employees, so right?
Yeah, that's just the employees, but yes, we'll get that, because last time we looked at that, we were very borderline.
So you'd have more using it.
Than not using enough to justify.
And wouldn't use it, unless they're just not going.
The next sheet, everybody good? The next sheet just breaks down legal fees. Legal expenditures from FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, FY twenty-six between, um, Woods Race and Dinsmore Show.
When did you start? Okay, all right. Not soon enough is right.
That was just for your honest information. Yeah.
Yeah, it's been worth it.
Some days we do. Poor all days, I don't know. The next page is OT positions. It's the salary for the OT position and the assistant position. And the social, the retirement, the workers' comp, and health insurance, only one of them has health insurance, um, and it's just on themselves. The total for this current year, for this current year, would be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand twenty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. On the next page, you see the last year that we had, uh, best light, they had the full-time, the previous, we have it backwards than you do.
Oh, sorry.
But it's okay.
I made it backwards. I just want, they were flipping, I'm not sure they saw.
The total was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand and twenty-three. So I tried to find, I tried to get with Beth, and it just didn't work out, to get, I'm pretty sure they were increasing it significantly, right?
Oh, yeah, they, they had, when we decided to do this, it was because they were increasing it.
They were going to increase it, so unfortunately, I don't have to show you what it would actually be versus what it is, but as you can see, even before they increased the cost, it was a hundred and fifty-eight, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So that was from two years ago, so we're still, three years ago, that would have been from three years ago, because this is FY twenty-six, that was FY twenty-three. So, um, even three years back, we're still saving at this point by having hired those two physicians versus contracting it out.
And we have them in the building, so we have access to them all the time, instead of them just being in our building one or two days a week, which is what we had before. It wasn't like we had two full-time people, they would come in, provide services a half a day and leave at one school. Now, we have access to them if kids need support or we need additional, you know, we can use them for additional things.
The next sheet is the, I don't got you completely out of order, do you? Is the next one the
Equipment lease purchase.
The lease payment, yes, thank you, I thought maybe I just missed some of them. This is the, um, remaining for the lights.
So we just paid our last payment?
We just paid our last one.
Oh, I thought we had one more. I'm sorry, I thought earlier you said we had no more, so we're done with the lights.
I probably was talking about FY twenty-five.
Sorry.
The year.
So we're, okay, so we're paid up, we own the lights?
Oh, so they're all paid off?
See, I guess it depends on how, yeah.
Because we
I was meaning, out of the fund balance that we had, we would have to account for that.
Yeah, but we don't make a payment.
But then currently, we've already made that payment, but it doesn't reflect.
Still doesn't show take off.
It's not reflected in that fund balance that I gave you guys, so that, that's just something to keep in mind with that payment. Um, you know, anything that we're contributing with the SBA, of course, the number of positions we end up in, or all of that, it's yeah, slowly chips away, some of the stuff that came up, you know, certain ones have to be done, that slowly chips away at that. But I think if you look at our expenditures from the last couple of years we've done, yeah, I think Dr. Ramier's done a good job of trying to weed out important versus just extra, and decrease those expenses overall where we can.
Just do what you tell me I can do.
The sheet after that is the schedule of the lease for the Apple computers. Just so you can see those in the years, and Jessica did have a plan for all, all four years of that, so. Two payments have been made as of today, and I think she already has the funding set aside, plus she'll get the additional technology funds next year, but she's still holding, I think, half of that payment, next year's payment already. And there's zero percent interest, so there's no point in paying it early. I was doing that talk the other day. Um, the next section, um, is just the HVAC maintenance contract agreement, um, the base salary on that is thirty-eight thousand five hundred. Um, a couple of years ago, we had gotten quotes on what it would cost, um, if we were to outsource that, um, to a company. You can see those behind. Riddle Burger Brothers gave us a quote, um, of one hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand a year. Um, and noted that that would not include necessary, necessary repairs nor replacements, it would only be the maintenance, which is what we currently have. Um, you know, just the maintenance for the thirty-eight thousand five hundred. But that one came back at a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. Southern Air, as you can see on the next sheet, Southern Air gave us the quote of a hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars annually um, for, uh, mate, preventative maintenance and cleaning, and then an additional seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty for annual water treatment. And then on the next page after that, air quality, systems had responded and said that they they did not have anyone or declined submitting a bid on that, um, that was just to clear up some. Yeah, the current contract is thirty-eight thousand five hundred, um, for maintenance. And then the last section is travel, um, just giving you guys, I think we put it in there last year as well, so I just gave you through the last three, four years, and then the current year-to-date of in-county travel and out-of-county travel. Just so you can compare those, um, fairly fairly, so it's not too, not too far off.
Reimbursement agreement. Wow.
Point seven, seventy cents. And that's up by IRS.
That's gonna be reflected in this too, isn't it? What that has been over the years, because at one point, it was under fifty cents.
Right, so you gotta count for that as well.
Well, I was just wondering why we were, yeah, from forty, what the difference would be, but that would make
How is that set?
Federal government.
Federal government sets that. Um, and it also went back and forth some, so some could have possibly been this decoded, like in-counting.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Accidentally got to the project code of in-county.
Gotcha.
So I just kind of looked at it as a total, where it was, you know, a little over seventy-one thousand and twenty-four, a little over seventy-two thousand and twenty-five, and you're gonna have that increase in mileage and stuff like that, so it's, I mean, for the most part, it's fairly
Consistent.
Fairly consistent. Anyone have any questions about any of those?
Are we a levy?
Do they have that section?
Um, I gave it to everybody, Melvin, did you, did I give this to you when you walked in to put in your book? You might have been the only one I didn't have, because you were, you had yours. There you go. You're welcome. Um, so what you have in front of you, this is not what we are submitting for, for on the levy. We met with each of, each principal, Sarah and I did, um, individually, and just had them give us requests that they had gotten from their teachers when they met with their staff about things they wanted to be included in the levy. So we took all of those things, I think I've left very, very little out, unless I thought it was just absolutely not doable, and just put it on here and did a general cost estimate, so if we put everything that they wanted in here over a period of five years, it was going to be sixteen million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we have a couple of different options when looking at the levy, um, I think based upon what Grant County did, they have one point nine million dollars a year coming in on their percentage, if we ran that same percentage, we'd have one point seven. So around a two million dollar levy, um, and so when we talked to administrators yesterday to kind of go through this and say, hey, we, we can't do all these things, like we have to go back, they had a really good question, their question was, oh, gosh, I'm shaking the camera. If we are over ten positions, then if this levy gets passed, is it basically going to give us all of these positions that we're wanting, but we still have to cut the ten to stay in formula? And we were like, well, essentially, yeah, that's gonna pay for this, but your base funding needs to still be supporting a certain number of positions. So their request was, they want to not lose anymore if we can pass the levy, so they want the levy to sustain them. They were worried, very much worried about losing their communities and schools coordinators, um, assistant principals who do a lot on that end. Um, they were worried about librarians being cut completely. They, they really would like to have interventionists, so what we did was kind of, I said, okay, well, let's just step back, what's your number one priority? Their number one priority was sustaining the staff that they currently have and not being cut anymore. Their second priority was having interventionists in their building, because they have, as you saw, the number of special ed kids that are being tested, they have a really high number of kids who need more one-to-one or small group support and intervention. And as we pull away Title One funds and we pull away from, um, the number of staff we just have overall in order to meet just the special ed needs, it's almost like you're not giving them good tier-one instruction, basic instruction, falling behind, qualifying as special ed, and then we're building special ed numbers which we're drowning in. So they asked for interventionists for their buildings. The other piece they would like to have is admission into athletic events, because they thought that was a community, um, need, that if, if the community could not have to pay to get into athletic events, that that might get them to vote for the levy. And then the last piece, which was number four, was something for And then the last piece, which was number four, was something for just all personnel. And that would have been, we were looking at like a thousand dollars across the board per employee, regardless if you were a service or a professional. Like five hundred of it in December, five hundred of it in June. Because then you're getting your bus driver or something, your cooks, your aides, which aren't really gonna benefit from some of the other pieces. That was their request. After we talked through it. No. Twenty, what was it? I think it was twenty-two, twenty-some percent.
Well, if you do that, you need to show like the person for paying X amount now, how much, that's when the policy.
Sure.
To see that. By the farmer.
The landings. Yeah, yeah. There would be a simulator that we would publish.
You need to show. If you pay currently about a month a year.
Yeah.
Taxes down, how much more are you gonna pay?
Yes. The other piece to that, which is really important that people need to understand, is your personal, the, the percentage of personal property tax that increases that you pay on your vehicles. Your personal property, not your real estate. That percentage, if you pay your taxes on time through recent legislation, you get that back as part of your. Income taxes as a tax credit that way. So it's a wash on that end. Well, it's in code, and that was a question somebody had asked, but we're in check on that. It's codified, it's.
Codified, so that would require another act of the legislature to remove that because. Yet we've got that information problem that it was, it was essentially the governor's decision.
Yeah.
And that the, with the change of administration, it was concerned that the governor, I guess, through the executive order or something, would just undo that. But it's, it's now caught. So it is within Western U K that that is, that is happening every single year. So until the legislature contemplates it, which really, that, that's, that's what they. Then if we were looking at, they, they can undo any law that they want to any, anytime that they decide to. It really just becomes.
Yeah, the governor can't change that. And we were, we were told that from someone. Based upon what they, they believed at that time, but that would be incorrect. So it's actually in law. So I think that's an important piece to share with folks is that. That the state's gonna pick up the cost of the levy on that portion of it that's you're paying on your personal property tax. So as long as you pay your taxes on time, you get that back.
It's pretty big sometimes.
Yeah, I understand. That would be up to those folks, so.
Thing about, if you get all the scoring.
That's what I told him yesterday.
Get a lich there likely to fail in seventy-nine and talk to the governor, make the bus driver work against.
Yeah. Well, and so our next steps would be. Sarah doing an estimate on those four things and trying to see if, based on the amount of money, what percentage would that be? Could we, can we give up or modify some of that to make it fit in the percentage we're interested in? And then going to, I wanna go to this, exactly what you said, Mr. Hines, I wanna send a survey out to all of the employees and just say, based upon this being in the levy. Would you vote yes for it? I need to know, because if we're not at ninety-five percent with employees, then I think we would be wasting our time. So that's the other piece. And we have to file it in January, I believe, if that's what we're interested in doing. So I just wanted you guys to give your feedback.
Thinking about running a levy.
When? May?
Primary.
Yeah, you can't hold a special, you used to be able to have a special, which would have been good because then. But you can't do that anymore anyway. They changed that. Yeah, they had a lot of things on there that they really were. Everybody was really interested in.
But like I said, they're the ones that have to stop and force to get it passed.
Yeah.
More so than any group.
Yeah.
You know, most of them have a spouse and grandma and grandpa and dad, get them on board. If you don't get them on board, it will never.
I think if you don't have anything specifically for them.
For salaries.
In their pockets. I mean, I know you can't do a percentage raise.
Always need people.
But the five hundred and five hundred is, you know, something at Christmas, something at vacation time, then everybody gets benefit to it from the personnel side. I mean, not that keeping your people aren't a benefit as well, but not everybody feels that quite like maybe a teacher or administrator would.
Yeah, if you don't get a group up to work against it, like all the boys always did, Johnny and Jimmy, they'd always pass that brochures down to shop and save.
I mean, you'll have people work against it. And I'm, I mean, you will.
They were probably the worst.
You will, but I think.
Pass that brochure.
Trying to remain positive and getting.
Maybe get some of the business people on board too, banks.
Yeah, and so in December, this would be something we'd have to officially discuss at our December first meeting on the, on the agenda. Because we then have to have community members and committees involved in actually going through. What this is gonna look like and, and giving feedback to. That's another part of the process. But I just haven't done any of that because. I went to the Moorefield High School booster meeting and it was a great meeting and they were all very supportive, but they had, you know, big things that they wanted to athletically. And I'm thinking, okay, well, that's great. And I thought, if I go to all of these community people and they start telling me what they want and then they don't see it. Then it looks like, well, we don't care about what you want or we don't care about what you want. So I thought, we should probably just back up and get our feet grounded and decide what it is and then go. And I still think we'll have a lot of support. I, I really do think getting into athletic events will save some families a lot of money. I mean, if you've got. A kid that plays girls' basketball and boys' basketball and two other kids at home. I mean, you're paying up to, what, probably fifty? Sarah, you've got a pile of kids at school. So you're paying a lot and going to those games if you're taking other kids with you and spouses. And you could pay fifty bucks. You could save some, some families hundreds of dollars a month. If you're paying fifty dollars a week.
And it's a home event, right? It doesn't work when you go to.
Correct, correct. I'm just thinking, if you've got a girl's home game, a boy's home game, and you're taking five people. You know, you're paying twenty-five dollars an event.
That's way up there.
Yeah.
Have they lost their sense of.
I don't know.
And they're rainbow, they lost their.
They did. I know. Gosh, wherever Mike Fitzwater's his name, I can't remember which county he superintendent in, but he just told me Monday, they just passed one for the first time. And it failed by four votes the first time around. And he asked for a recount and it passed by one. I was like, oh my gosh. And I'm thinking that could be the reality. I mean, it could be really that everybody matters, so. One, yeah, every, I, I, so that's my plan that I have kinda laid out in my head as to what the next steps are, but. I mean, you guys have to be on board too.
Was that the last year they tried to run one?
No, that's when it all started.
Had they tried after that?
Even athletic even maybe doctrine action.
It took one time. Then it lost after that. They, that's when. Didn't they try running it one more time?
Tried it two or three times.
Okay.
Okay.
But definitely took sixty percent. It got to.
Well, and where's that list we were looking at? It had all the counties, all the counties were on that list and you could see which ones had levies. What was it? Is it ten now that don't? Single digits, maybe not, okay.
How much, how many more years do we have on the school bond?
Cause projected we paid off, or according to be paid off to twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty was enhanced, yeah.
And then the twenty thirty again, it was.
Projected.
With the N A four.
Okay.
Um, but we were projected to pay it off, I think a little bit before. So then there. Possibly a discussion about what those funds are going to be given out before we just. End it at that point.
Old has the levy?
Well, it's just if you still have that time on the school bond and, and then try to run a levy on top of that, I just.
Well, I definitely need to know how you guys feel about it because if I don't have your support, I won't, I won't move forward, so.
I, I think, yeah.
I, I just want to go into it, I mean, again, I, you're, you're probably a good sampling of the community. I, I wanna know for sure that I have. You guys behind it before we take the next step, cause you're really the starting point of it. So, I mean, and be honest with me, I.
I mean, I've never not voted for a school levy positively.
Yeah.
Because I believe in education, that's why I'm here. And I think we need to enhance our program, but unfortunately. There are so many people that the bucks are so tight that, and you know, they. They're already paying for the bond, the, the school bond, and then they get a levy tacked on top of them and I just don't know.
You pay it in Grant County. Do you remember how much it increased your taxes? I'm just trying to think of what, of an example for them.
No, you, like I said, you need to, so they know how much.
We'll put a simulator out, yeah. Come back.
But how about, how about? I just don't know. Is the county commission, are they going to raise? Have you heard any talk about them raising taxes? I know they've talked about the ambulance fee. Okay, because, and, and I know that part of this. That M A N is to help them with ambulance fees. They're hoping for that project or those. Community project like those. Or the.
Yeah.
And mineral, I can tell you that my parents, with their personal property, once the, once the levy passed, it went up twenty-one dollars per.
Total. And they, how big is theirs though? Theirs is.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
But just being able to look at and we're doing research before we're getting some of those.
Okay.
Some of the dollar figures is what it would actually.
Twenty-one dollars, okay.
On the personal side.
Yeah.
Once we dump in a big, you know, increase in taxes through the county, that would fix us if they decide. And a bond with them depends on the conditions. You know, because that's where they're.
Or the.
When the bond, when they have the bond.
He's asking, when the bond's done, twenty thirty?
Twenty thirty.
But projected to be paid off a little early.
Maybe twenty, twenty one. So we've got. You know, to three years, basically, that could be added.
Oh, yeah, I, I know, it's not a fun thing. I don't know.
And that's one people probably didn't know at all because, you know, your businesses probably be the most of the main focus. Tom Paul, I guess. Their taxes, you got two. Yeah. But you can get some down behind.
Yeah.
Look, if they have persons' taxes, probably not gonna go up. And most people, forty, fifty dollars. What's that, a couple packs of cigarettes?
Well, I think they said Doug Lambert sold the first one in. In Grant County by saying it would cover a six pack of, like a six pack of beer each week or something would be what you would basically be putting in towards. I think. Oh, there you go. I don't know what a six pack of.
I think my personal property went up a little over a hundred dollars for personal property.
For the year?
Now, I could be wrong, but I think, trying to remember what I saw on those lines, it'll say like school levy.
Yeah.
It's like a hundred and twenty some dollars. But I could be wrong.
So ten dollars a month?
For me, that was an easy.
Well, once you get in for free, you save your hundred and twenty some dollars, yeah.
Five games and there's a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I, I definitely think.
You gotta educate.
You, you gotta educate people and you just can't have one or two little scenarios. And I remember that not so many years ago. Maybe it's for the bond, build a middle school or whatever it was. It just wasn't enough scenarios that fit my category.
Okay.
So if you live in an apartment in Moorefield, you need the scenario for that. If you own a house or.
It's a great point.
Double wide or trailer, you need the scenario for that.
Okay.
If you own a hundred acres plus a house, you need a scenario, you know, you gotta have five or six or seven different scenarios.
And you gotta have, like I said, not only in town as compared to the country. I wouldn't pay in what Dixie warehouses were worth the same.
Right, right.
If I lived in Moorefield, I lived everywhere around, you know, that's, that's probably different.
I, I just think, and we're only talking, like he said, twenty-five dollars a year. Now, we're talking a hundred dollars a year for everybody. That's different.
This would be different.
Well, and I think if you say to them ten dollars a month, or like if you look at it as a, as a monthly, like a hundred dollars a year sounds like a lot when you're paying it all at once. But if you can explain it to folks, like, you know, that's only ten dollars a month.
Yeah, I mean.
If you go to a football game, if you go to a football game and. At home and pay fifteen dollars for the three of you to get in, you know, three times a month or whatever, three times a season, you're, you're covering portions of that. I mean, I think that'll make people think about it too. But you're gonna have folks that don't go to sporting events too. They're gonna say, that doesn't help me at all. Yeah. So it's gonna be a big.
Whatever it's the Sarah's or communities are getting over and less kids, so that.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Well, I think you're right though. If, if you wanna proceed with this, the first step is after maybe you get all the scenarios done. Is poll all the teachers in county. And if you get sixty percent of, yes, then you know, they use fourth.
Right.
That means forty percent's not gonna vote for it.
That's right.
Bad mouth.
That's right.
But if you got ninety-five percent of them saying, yeah, this is a good idea, stop on the herd, it's too bad.
Go that route.
They'll spread the word.
I think you can put out simulators now too that, that you can build in that lets us lock the rate in and then people can say, last year I paid. This amount, or this is my, what I paid last year, this is what it'll do to my taxes next year. And they can get an estimate through just like a little online thing we can, we can share out too. So everybody should be able to plug in, or they probably didn't have that the last time you were, when they ran the bond. But now you go online and just type it in and it'll tell you this is your predict, or your estimated amount. Okay, okay. Same type of deal then, so that would be the plan, but.
But you got, like the concept says, you have the older generation that don't. And I'm getting them, go quick.
We'll set you up in a booth. We'll send all those, we'll send all those people to you. Go see Mr. Harper Sunset on, on Saturday morning. Uh, we also need to figure out what role we can play because I know that. Advocating for it or against it, obviously not against it, we wouldn't wanna do that, but. There are limitations on what board members can do and even central, even me, so like while we can, I can go and do informational, like here's information about it, these are the facts. I can't promote it, is that right, Orin?
Correct. You can't use your, for, for.
Positions.
You can't use your official capacity to, to promote similarity with Dr. Van Meter, which is superintendent, not use that, that position. I, I think that you, I think that it's better to, to, well, just not, not to engage in that and, and.
The work you're actually asking.
If you're asked as a citizen, as a citizen, you know, obviously you have your personal benefits and, and to do that as, my advice would be not, not to. Not to discuss your position with regard to information, providing, you know, factual information, but, but not getting too far. Because the last thing that you all want individually or collectively or is somebody to make some sort of ethical claim that you were promoting it or, or, or working against it. In any sort of capacity, because that's on the other. Information.
You should have to pay that much.
But that's where, that's where something that can be done is, is, you know, outside of you all as the board, Dr. Van Meter specifically. Like, like the average, the average employee that we have, as long as they're not, not campaigning for it in, like during their work time or using their position, they're allowed to. Go out and promote it however they want to. And I think that's something that, just from the preliminary stages that we've been through is really creating. Contacts within the community that would be willing to do that.
Yeah.
You know, on, not, not acting on behalf of the board, or acting on behalf of Dr. Van Meter or some law firm of that nature. But folks that are dis supportive of it that are out there, you know, in the streets and try to, try to create those ones promoted, that is permissible because they're, they're not working at your own direction.
Yeah, like Brandon Barb, for example, is very much in favor of it. He said he would promote it. Reed Williams said he would support it and promote it for us. Brent said he would promote it and support it for us. So we have people that people know, if that makes sense in Moorefield. Now we're, we were talking about Dave Walker on the east side. But we haven't reached out to him, but we need to just find some, some. Now, we're, we were talking about Dave Walker on the east side, um, but we haven't reached out to him, but we need to just find some, some folks that are supportive, that'll work for us. From each area. And then even when it comes to like social media, I mean, there were gonna, there are going to be things on there that are negative, that we can't go on and say, hey, no, don't, you know, on Facebook, but if we have people that are willing to do that, that can help give factual information when that stuff comes up.
The other tradition, even that.
Do we wanna adjourn? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can spend, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's something that's, is, you know, got to be very much above board with expenditures, with, and that's why I think, maybe it's better to be cautious with, with your roles, we're all talking about your role in this, because, you know, it's, it's gotta be above board. Anytime that you're doing something like this, it's not above board, and, and.
I know originally, when we, E S, E S G had offered up funding to help support promotional stuff for it when the time came, so they were, they were prepared to help support that, so that's a good thing. And I know Z E M M will help with that, probably, um, some of our architectural firms and groups that we work with are willing to help on those things. They, they give, they donate for events like that, or advertising. Ready to adjourn?
Oh, sure. That, one thing that.
Oh, yeah, 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 thank you.
Earlier, and I'm, I'm sorry, I was watching before I got over here, but the, the topic of the out-of-state placements for juveniles, I just wanted to touch on that just real briefly. Because what the department, D H H R, D O H S now, I think they are, what they're supposed to do is, is with delinquents, really juvenile delinquents are the only out-of-state placements that, that we can have. Not the status offenses and JAs, or, um, for the abusive electives, or, or sometimes. The department is supposed to essentially comb the state for a placement for a child before they look out of state, and then come back to the judge and say, we have made an effort to find, find an in-state placement for this child, but, but can't. Now, what, at, at the end of my time within the, within the court system, was, um, we're constantly doing psychological evaluations for these kids that were coming in, because, and, and rightfully so, the judge is wanting to know what, what the underlying issues were, so that particularly in the juvenile system, we're, we're addressing them, and we're getting them into a facility with folks and services that they need to get the treatment that, that they require. A lot of times, a vast majority of times, we were not finding those in-state, because they're just rough resources. The facilities within the state didn't have qualifications, didn't have the personnel, didn't, didn't have the services available to treat the needs of those juveniles based on what that psychological evaluation came about. So that's really the process to it, that, I mean, much like everything else, how we're seeing in special education, under skyrocket, we're seeing, you know, a, a lot of those other things, it's not something that's going to change, and we're, we're just kinda behind in the state with facilities available for, for those kids, that's what we've seen in Alabama, Oklahoma, Ohio. Because it's, it then goes to searching, scouring the country for a facility that treats the needs of that, that weird child. And I would echo what Dr. Van Meter says, um, when I was representing the state, that was something that, that was not known. You know, the, the judges may have known that, but had, had I known at that time that it was something that the school systems, based upon memory and understanding, were paying, that there would have been a seat at the table before those decisions were made, because it's even reflected within the orders for that placement. It says the department, meaning the D H H R, D O H S, is to pay them. And so, that, that was always the understanding, is that they were the ones to pay. So I, I think that there, maybe not from the judge's standpoint as much, but certainly from the attorney's and from the guardian ad litem standpoint, I don't think that there's, that there's vast knowledge of that being required to be paid by the local school systems.
I would agree with you on that.
But just to get a little, a little bit more like this, what that, what that process is to get a child out of state, is that there, there are steps that are taken before it's like, okay, well, let's just ship them to, to Virginia or wherever else, is that there, there are processes to be done, but there's not a lot of resources in the state to treat a lot of the, a lot of the things that we're seeing in the kids in state.
Unfortunately.
But there's a multimillion dollar idea, if anybody has the credentials, of the facilities to treat.
No kidding.
It'd be full on day one.
Yep.
Move to adjourn.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn at one forty-six. All those in favor? Oppose? We're adjourned.